Good morning, I'd like to call the order of the Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able and join us in saying the flag of allegiance.
Our flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Due to the ongoing pandemic, we are continuing to offer social distancing and provide access to our board meetings via Zoom, which is allowed through Section 21.8.1. With that, is there approval of the agenda?
To move second.
Then moved by Merkin and seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddad's aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make public comments that's either in the room here today or on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, please hit the raise hand function or star nine to unmute yourselves. Now wait a few seconds to see if there's anyone who'd like to make public comments. Seeing anything, Carol? Not seeing anything. We'll close public comment number one. Moving on, we have agency reports. We have the Boys and Girls Club. Yeah, I see Erica Peterson online. See. Good morning, Erica. Good morning.
Good.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can't hear you yet.
Erica, can you hear us? We can hear her on Zoom, not the board, not in the boardroom. They can't hear folks in the boardroom?
Ms. Camelia, Amelia, can you hear us?
Amelia, can you hear us?
Hello? Testing. Can you hear me? Hello?
Hold on just a few minutes as we try to address technical difficulties.
All right, it looks like in the chat they can hear me.
I think I'm hearing. Erica, can you hear us now?
Okay.
Erica, we can hear you. But I don't think she can hear us. I wonder if it's her audio.
Any luck there in the boardroom? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Lisa, I see your head nodding. So that's good? Oh, great. Okay, good. Sounds good. All right.
Go ahead and.
And I see the question, the Board of Supervisors, asking if we can hear. I see, I saw Lisa's head nodding, but I didn't necessarily hear anything, so. So am I good to go ahead? Thumbs up? All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, so kind of a fun way to start the morning, huh? Thank you all for your patience with the technical issues. I just want to start by, first of all, thanking the Board of Supervisors in Story County for the, the, the great support during this last year. Obviously, it's been a challenge for, you know, anyone and everyone. And, you know, we at the Boys and Girls Clubs, obviously, were impacted like everywhere else. And so, but working with the, with Story County, we were able to draw down all of our asset funding for the 2020 fiscal year and have been able to work out drawing and are on track to be able to draw it all down for the 2021 fiscal year as well. So we appreciate your willingness to, to work with us as we shifted our model this year and served kids in a different way to make sure that they had what they needed to be able to be successful in schools as well as, you know, while they were home with the pandemic. So I'm going to share my screen and talk through the, the presentation of, I'm hoping you guys can all see that. Yep, okay, looks like, looks like you guys can see that there. And just kind of work through a little bit about what this last year looked like for us. What I do want to share first and foremost is that the, the data about members and kids is based on the calendar year 2020 and the financial data is based on the fiscal year 2020. So, so the timelines overlap a little bit on those, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that as I kind of work through this. So. So as we know, the pandemic drastically impacted youth across the nation and across the world. And some of the statistics that we were seeing, obviously, we know that the kids were actually out of school in Ames from March through, well, actually, across the county from March and through August. And so with school closures, so that was five months of interrupted learning, interrupted instruction. We know that the, the Ames schoolchildren then were in the hybrid instruction for over four months with quite a few of the other children then being, having some sort of modified learning along the way. And McKinsey, McKinsey and Company did project that there would be at least one year's worth of learning loss for low-income students because of the interruptions due to the pandemic. And this was just with the five month, let alone the entire year being disrupted the way it was. Some of the challenges, obviously, was that in many cases, especially for lower-income students, there was inadequate or no supervision while schools were in a hybrid or a virtual model. And so that left a lot of kids on their own for meals, for supervision, just for their own safety. So those were some of the challenges that we saw kids facing here within our county. So obviously, it's a pretty, pretty, there's going to be long-term implications that we'll be addressing locally, nationally, and globally because of this. So part of our formula for impact with Boys and Girls Clubs, though, is that we take the kids who need us the most, and then we give them that outcome-driven club experience to really achieve higher outcomes. And so we know from the body of research of kids that participate in Boys and Girls Clubs in general, that they have higher academic success rates and higher graduation rates than their peers. They become more involved as citizens and in service with that good character and citizenship. And then also, they make, they take fewer high-risk, they make fewer high-risk choices, right? So they live healthier lifestyles, avoiding some things that could drastically impact their lives later on. So a little bit about us locally is that we have been cultivating hope and opportunity since 1963. So we've been, we've been around for almost 60 years, which is really great. Our demographics this last year, and again, these are calendar year numbers. So in 2020, we served 451 youth ages six to 18. Thirty-one of those kids were registered for our Nevada program. So our Nevada after-school program. Fifty-one percent female, 49 male, and about one-fifth of all of our kids served are teenagers. And so that's our unique population that we do serve in our after-school and summer programming. That is unique to Boys and Girls Clubs is that we do serve all the way through seniors and high school. As you can see also with additional demographics is that we do serve, we do serve a very diverse population, and that is a proud statistic that we have had for many, many years at the Boys and Girls Club. And so we are, we are definitely very proud of being able to bring people from, from across all sorts of backgrounds into our clubhouses. So programmatically, our numbers, obviously, were drastically impacted by the pandemic like everyone else. Our, our summer programming in 2020, we averaged 16 kids a day. So we had a very modified summer. We didn't open until July. And when we did, we were only open four days a week. So we'd have that fifth day for intense cleaning and additional programming. So, and that was, if, if you can remember back to July 2022 or 2020, that was a time when we were just beginning to see things and reemerge from that initial closure of the pandemic. So there were still a lot of questions. There was still a lot of folks who were hesitant. We reached out to all of our families. We were communicating with them regularly to get a pulse on what their needs might be and/or what would be some of the, some of the ways we might be able to meet those needs. And so a lot of our families just weren't ready to come back yet. But like you, you can see, we did have, we averaged 16 kids a day who were coming regularly, starting in July. And then once the school year started, so that school year attendance is from September through December, our numbers started to go up. We did offer a day club program at our Ames site. And so we were open from 7:30 till 5:30 every day so that kids could have a place to come and have supervised access to their online instruction as well as some modified support from our staff to help with that instruction. Our Nevada program, we opened in September for after-school programming, and we ran after-school in Nevada, starting in September as well. So. And then in our pandemic response, you heard me starting to talk about that. So in March and June, March through June, we had virtual programming. So we were doing daily STEM and art activities online for the kids to be able to log into. Check it out either on our Facebook page or on our website. We did weekly care kits. And so we did that starting in March all the way through the end of the summer. So we would provide anywhere from two to five bags of perishable or of fresh and non-perishable food products for our families and as well as activity packets for the kiddos that they could either do logging into our virtual program or activities that they could do where they wouldn't have to do anything online as well. We did a summer club for the two months there. We did a club in the park, which was a unique program that we, that we launched during the pandemic. So four days a week, we were in two parks and folks could sign up to come for a couple of hours, receive a healthy snack, do some reading and literacy programming, and then do any other, other youth programming that we did there. This was a nice option for families who either didn't want their kids coming all day or weren't quite ready to be in an indoor setting. And then, as I mentioned, in September through December, we did the day club at our Ames site to help with the online learning. So our FY20 financials, so this would have been from July 2019 through June 2020. These were our revenue and our expenses. And so even though given we were in the pandemic, we, we feel very blessed that the generosity of a lot of our donors and corporations really, really came through. And so we were able to end the year well during that pandemic year. So kind of going back to some of those outcome-driven programs, so in our academic success programs, these are some of the programs that we do in general and some of the things that we try to touch on either during the summer, throughout the school year, or that we do in, in, that we were doing even during, during our modified programming. So STEM and Science Club, High-Yield Learning Activities, a lot of literacy, literacy-based programming as well as just free reading. We do financial literacy programming. We do a soil conservation program, tutoring, and art club. Healthy lifestyle being one of those other, one of our other three priority outcomes. And so we do, we always make sure that, that, get that heart pumping and that blood pumping is an important part of our daily activities with the club. And so, so we have fitness activities for individuals and for groups. We have a taekwondo club. We've done our cooking club. And then we also have some of the gender-based programs promoting self-esteem and avoiding high-risk behavior. So really building, learning how to build relationships and building respect for self-actors. And then our character and citizenship programs. And so service to the club and community, that's called our Torch Club program. Youth of the Month, Youth of the Year, and those are the, and then programs that recognize when kids are practicing the RISE's values to respect, integrity, compassion, excellence, and safety. So I highlighted a little bit about, you know, what club looked like during, during the pandemic. And so here are some pictures of some of the things that really kind of took off during that time period. So the pictures of the kiddos here, they did a public health-friendly lemonade stand where folks would come and purchase their lemonade and all the proceeds of this project that was completely led and driven by club members. The proceeds went to support the Ames Animal Shelter, which was the, the place of choice by these kiddos. They wanted to support the animals. And so this is what they did. They raised $177 for the Ames Animal Shelter. Their goal, I think, was like $50. And so they were just blown out of the water that they were able to raise that much more money in a couple of weeks. Once the school year started then, obviously, our, our club, you know, usually we were after-school only during the school year, after-school until six or seven. And so instead, we shifted gears and responded to be able to meet the needs of our kiddos. So we did daily health screenings. We had masks, frequent hand sanitizing and hand washing. We really, really emphasized that, that academic portion to making sure that your kids could get, have access to their online learning as well as then the support of adults to be able to either access and/or complete their assignments. In Nevada, we did open up to third and fourth grade as well. So previously, we were middle, middle school only. And we found, based on requests from the families, that they were asking that we would open up to some of the younger members or open up to younger members so that their older siblings could come as well. So that was something that we launched in the fall. And then, you know, as many of you know, we also provide a healthy meal and snack every day that club is open. Food insecurity is not our mission, but we do know that if kids are hungry, they're not going to be able to become these, to fulfill their full potential. And so we want to take hunger out of the equation, and that's why we make sure that we provide the meals and snacks that we do. So in 2020, we provided 5,218 meals and snacks. And then during the, from March to August, when we were providing those weekly care kits, we provided a total of 2688 food bags to over, serving over 100 kids during that time period. So. So that's just kind of a photo journey through our, this last year. Typically, I have a, you know, just a written response, but I thought since we were going to be virtual and, and online, that seeing some pictures might help to bring it to life a little bit more. So I'm open to any questions that you might have.
So Erica, can you hear us yet? You can still hear us, correct? Yeah, I know. I wasn't sure if she ever could or, everyone else can, but I don't think Erica can hear us. So I think what we probably need to do.
Put something in the chat.
Just, yeah.
She seems not to be able to hear us, so thank you.
Yeah. Because I think if we have questions, we're going to have to email her individually.
Unfortunately, I'm unable to hear you. I see some heads nodding, but I can't hear anything. Okay, maybe now?
Erica, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear you now. Sorry.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, if you could hear, Supervisor, any questions you have?
This is Linda Merkin. I had just a couple. I saw that you, under your academic success program, you have soil conservation listed. Just want what you did with kids to help promote their understanding of soil conservation.
Yes, so there's a program that we offer called Pizza-thon. And obviously, by the name, you would never think it's soil conservation. But it's in, it's done in conjunction with the Golden K Lions here in Ames. And that Pizza-thon program basically teaches kids this, where all of their pizza toppings come from. So it takes it all the way back to, you know, to the grain, to the soil. And so they start by, by planting seeds and watching them grow and how that turns into the wheat for the crust and also the feed for the animals. And, and then it culminates with them making their own pizza, having learned the whole process of, of why caring for the soil is going to help them have pizza. So it's kind of a fun, non-traditional way, but that's, that's the program that we've used. We typically do it in the summer. And sometimes we've woven those things in throughout the school year as well.
That sounds great. Have you talked to Story County Conservation about how they might be able to help with?
I haven't. That's a wonderful idea. That's a really great idea. Thank you.
Training for children, and I think that's a good, a good opportunity to collaborate with them.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have one other question. And this is just kind of, this is something that just, just made me scratch my head. Under your Formula for Impact slide, your graphic, you have five key elements for positive youth development.
Yes.
I don't see five key elements.
The five key elements are, are, they're not listed there. No, no, yeah, so the five key elements are, that's one bubble, but then there's the five elements, which are, and you're going to test my knowledge here, right? Just to make sure I can remember them all. So a safe, positive relationships, fun. Oh, goodness gracious, Linda, I haven't, I haven't had to recall that in just a little while. So I'm sorry, I don't have that at the top, tip of my, at the tip of my tongue. But they're, they are these, these key ingredients that are necessary to really provide that most, the best possible space for youth to develop. And so high expectations, recognition, it's all coming back to me now. So high expectations, recognition, positive adult relationships, a safe environment, and fun. You put all of those pieces together, and that helps to create that positive youth development.
And what, looking forward then to calendar 21, which we're in now.
Right.
Just the activities, the things you've changed in 20, what are you back to now? What are you looking forward to doing? Or what do you see going forward into 21 that's going to be?
Absolutely. So we are, we were operating through the school year, up until recently, we were operating at a 50% capacity at our Ames Club. And so we have just upped that to 80% so that now going forward through the rest of the school year and then into the summer, we can host more children within the club. We will maintain lower ratios. And so our ratio of staff to kids will be no more than one to 15, but ideally still even smaller than that. We'll continue to, you know, from a public health perspective, we'll continue to wear masks as long as, as it is of benefit for the kiddos. And I think, and we're back to after-school programming. So we're back to kind of that, that regular routine model that we know and love. And so, so that's, those are, that's the high level. Is that kind of what you were looking for?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And so we're hoping that by next fall, we'll be able to be back to 100% at all places. But just kind of as we go into summer, you know, we, we are seeing that we're having some challenges with hiring summer team. We usually don't have as, as many challenges with that. And I'm hearing that that's actually quite common. So that might impact how many kids we're able to serve based on how many staff we're able to hire for the summer. So I'm hoping that as some of those pieces start to maybe work themselves out and become, you know, once folks get back into the groove of things a little bit more, it'll help to positively impact us as well.
Great, thank you. That was my question as well. Supervisor, if I could give you additional.
Yeah, well, one of my questions was what, what is your staffing looking like and are you having any, any challenges with that? But I, I'm so glad to hear that the program went well through the year and that you're strong in Nevada and that you're growing in Nevada.
Yes, yes.
The impact of Boys and Girls Club follows people, follows those kids their entire life.
Yep.
Could see that, that the Boys and Girls Club sees the whole child and, and everything that comes together.
Yes.
The child's life, like, like food insecurity and.
Yep.
Yeah, they're doing fantastic work. So I have nothing but, but good. I don't have any other questions. Just, thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I should say, you know, this report kind of takes us through the end of 2020. Here in 2021, I should just say, we had, the amount of community support has just been phenomenal. We had our second highest gala ever, raising over $91,000 at the end of February. And it was an entirely virtual experience. So we had no idea. And that's one of our big annual pillars for fundraising. Obviously, we depend heavily on community support. You know, all of our asset funders collectively provide about 40% of our annual budget. And so then corporate, individual, and our special events helped to make up kind of the, the extra to support all of our kiddos. And it was just, we were blown away by people's generosity. And, and that's been very, very inspiring and motivating for all of us that, you know, it's like, we can do this. We know we got the community behind us to support the kiddos. And so we can, we can get this done together. So, so thank you again for all of your support. Thanks for shifting with us and helping us to cover the kids during the day club this last year. And, and we look forward to continuing to grow the program. We, sorry, one more thing. We have 30 kids signed up for the Nevada program this summer, which is huge. It'll be our first summer in Nevada. And so we're just, we're thrilled with the response there. So that's pretty awesome, too. So, all right, so I'll stop like dragging this on anymore. Thank you so much for your support this morning.
Erica, have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Erica.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. We've got the April 6th, 2021 minute.
I moved, mixed up the minutes.
Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddad's aye. All right, next, consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel action?
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second. Then moved by Merkin and seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddad's aye. Next, there's consideration of claims. Move approval of claims as presented? Second. Then moved by Faisal and seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddad's aye. Next round to consent agenda. Is there anything that other of you are pulling from consent agenda?
I don't know.
No? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of consent agenda.
Second. Then moved by Merkin and seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddad's aye. We have no public hearing items. And so next we go on to additional items. The first one we have on here is consideration of Resolution 21-81, Uncommitted of Fund Balance. Lisa Markley?
Hi, can you hear me?
Lisa.
Hello. Good morning. So what this is, is an uncommitment. You, this Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors, back in 2016, committed the funds that we received, that the County Conservation Board received from the Dakota Access, Dakota Access in the amount of 1.6 million. And in order to spend those dollars, those need to be uncommitted. What I'm doing is the first uncommitment actually for FY21, which, which is nine months' worth of expenses that they've, that they've made against that 1.6 million. So we're uncommitting $328,696. The amount that is left in there at this point in time is $738,097. Can I make any questions for me? Can I make any questions for me?
After this, after we uncommit these funds, the 738 will be the remaining balance.
Correct.
What was that final, was 738 what, Lisa?
Oh, 97.
Thank you.
And if they spend, which most likely happens typically, if they spend more in the next three months, the, the last three months of the, of the fiscal year, we will uncommit these at the, at fiscal year end. Anything that they've spent so that we'll have an, we'll know exactly what's left in the uncommitted, or in the committed, excuse me.
Any additional? Is there a motion to approve resolution 21-81? So moved. Then moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal? Sedan's aye. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, board.
Yep. Next up, we have discussion of permit requests from the city of Nevada for a Trump sewer pipe along highway S14. Good morning, Darren. Lisa, I'm hearing some background noises. Folks that are on the gym, if we could please knit yourselves. I think that took care of it.
Okay, I'm here to talk about a proposed utility permit from the city of Nevada. They have not actually submitted the permit yet, so you have nothing to act on now. I just thought it was time to bring the board up to speed. It's been going on for a number of months here, some discussions in the background. And I still have some concerns about it enough that I thought it's time to get the board at least up to speed. Here's where the project would go. City of Nevada up here, Highway 30, and this is S14. It would go down S14 right away, down to 270th, and then over in the tree plant down in this area. Let me just give you a little quick background on how it got to this point. The city of Nevada brought the original proposal with the planning development last year, and that was for the entire tree. At that point, they had the line going across private property, kind of following Indian Creek. I don't know the exact line, but closer to the lower area along Indian Creek to get down here. That would require easements to get down through private property owners. At some point after that, I'm not sure the timing of it, but the city weighed their alternatives and then made the decision to move the line into the S14 road right away. So they would not have to buy easements from private property owners. Except for the last half a mile, at that time they had proposed to go on private over and down. And then at some point after that, planning and development asked them to go back and talk to this property owner. And at that point, I'm not sure the background of that, but the city then decided to even put this stretch into S14 right away. And then along S27. So all the private property was removed at that point. About September of 2020, that's when the city decided to move the entire project into S14 right away. After that landlord didn't support the sewer going across his property. The consulting engineer for the city contacted me about the utility process, utility permit process with the county. From the start, I told him, you know, our utility permit's not really set up for something of this magnitude. So we're going to have to work out the details and there's going to be a lot of visual requirements above and down what our normal utility permit requires. I did indicate, I didn't want them digging any closer to the S14 pavement than about the toe of the four slope. I'll get into a little bit later what that looks like. And that I had some real safety concerns on how this could be even constructed safely on a rural highway. Engineer said that they might have to close the road to do the work. And I said, that's really not an option. We go to the next slide. Just to give you an idea, this is S14 south of Nevada. If any of the stretch that they're talking about working on gets closed, you can see what we're talking about for a detour. We're required to have a paved detour route for anything we close by Iowa code. So you're, you're talking about a 20 mile detour route if we close S14 in this stretch at all. It gets about 1,300 vehicles per day. So that's the impact. Amount of traffic is going to get impacted every day. So we went further to discuss, we might be open to the option of one-laning the road during the day. So there would be stretches in here, we'd have a pilot car taking traffic back and forth and leaving one lane open. See, have that safe distance to work in. It sounds like this project could go on for almost an entire year. So you'd be looking at that one lane traffic for most entire year. I then reached out to Jordan Cook on March 5th, letting me know I had some pretty serious concerns about their most recent proposal. And I made a recommendation that we meet as soon as possible, discuss my concerns before they get too far along with the project. A week or two later, on March 12th, I received the 30% preliminary plans from their engineer and a notice of a public meeting the city was holding, except for March 15th. After attending that public meeting and reviewing the preliminary plans, I sent a letter expressing my concerns. Those preliminary plans had a little bit more depth than I was expecting. And what I really wasn't expecting is the number of bore pits. There's like 24 to 26 bore pits included in that. And I'll show you some diagrams of that to show what bore pit looks like. That's my biggest concern, how those are going to be constructed. Uh, this, I requested that the city come and meet with the board of supervisors to bring you up to speed at that point. But the city requested we met, we meet privately before that to discuss the project before going to the board. That meeting was held with Ethan and myself, where we discussed the concerns the county had about their project. And then their engineer prepared a letter in an attempt to address those concerns, and I gave you a copy of that. But I still feel like there's some points that have not been addressed to my satisfaction at this point, where I could recommend approval of utility permit to the board. Some of those issues, legal issues. Ethan will probably talk about some of those when I'm done here. The legal side of things is one, are we required to approve utility permit? I talked to DOT and they flat out said, no, if you don't feel there's enough right away for this to be done, you can turn, deny a utility permit. Two, can we even legally approve something of this magnitude within an easement that we only really have for road purposes? We have an easement out there for road purposes from landlords they own to the center of the road. Are we even legally allowed to approve something of this magnitude? Thirdly, just the rights of county residents, how to get representative. It's, it's a unique situation. There's a very large city project going on out in the county. So how are the county residents getting represented, just represented on this project and their access? The second issue is the traffic impact and safety. One, can it be built safely for traffic? And two, there's some liability with the county on the safety issues when it's being built. I want to go forward a slide. This is the original that was sent to me from the city. It's really hard to see, but the dark line is sewer line. This is when they originally planned on not going in the last half a mile down. This is 270th, gravel's north is up. The dark line went across private property in this direction. But then they eventually put it all in private property. Next slide. At their public meeting, they kind of showed a diagram of what the trench line would look like. There'll be two methods used to put, put this in. This is the trench. They dig this open cut and put the trench box in there to go down the depth. It could be 10 to 20 feet deep. The other method is boring. We don't have to do the open trench except for the bore pits. And then you bore it through a maximum of about 500 foot length. They can bore this line in, and most of that's done in front of the houses in some of the deeper areas. This is where we talked about possibly one-laning the road. So traffic would have this safety barrier before they got to the big drop off over here where that open trench would be. And then at night, when it got back open, we discussed they would have to cover this or cap it somehow for traffic safety. Might be able to be done. I'm concerned how that exactly will be done, but that's a possibility. But except the bore pits are my bigger concern. And then the city also proposes on the, to purchase some temporary easement off. So they get all the material that comes out of here has to be stockpiled. So you can see how tight the right of way is. S14 has very little right of way for a paved county highway. It's narrow in the first place and try to squeeze something in, in there is very difficult. So they're going to have to purchase some easement to put all the material to excavate and then bring it back and to store all their pipe. So that is the current plan. Next slide. This is what a bore pit looks like. Some of the proposal on this would be at least 20 feet deep in some spots. And you could, the road would be right next to this. So you can see my safety concern if a car went off of that, how far they would drop. Trying to get an estimate from them on how big these would be. Originally, it was 40 foot wide by 80 foot long. In the letter, you can see they said it's possible they might build a narrow list of 30 foot wide. It'd still be about 80 foot long in this bore pit.
How, how, why does that ditch though? How that right of way?
This?
Our right of way from the shoulder.
Um, I've got a diagram. We'll show that next. And then my, my concern with these is at night, how do we, we open the road back up? This is still there. These bore pits are going to be open for a week or two. And you can't, it's not feasible to fill this whole thing back in for traffic concerns. So. Go to the next slide, kind of show you what some of the options might be. This is the traffic edge of pavement. The DOT manual says if you, first of all, it says bore pitch should be placed outside of the clear zone. And I'll get to clear zone here in a second, what that means. That is really not possible here with the road makeup we have out there with S14. But it says if special considerations could be made to put it within the clear zone. And if that's done, you have to put a barrier in here somehow. This is a Jersey barrier. They call it a concrete barrier. It requires a two-foot offset from the pavement. And our shoulders out there are only two and a half to three foot wide. And so it just really isn't room to do that. So I'm not sure how we'd be able to get that done with the Jersey barrier. And then at the ends, they have to flare out about five to six feet for safety to come into it. Or you have to protect it with those large crash barrels. Again, I'm not sure we'll have enough room. Outer edges, they might be able to build the shoulder out because it will be outside the bore pit. In the bore pit area itself, it's going to be very difficult to put a Jersey barrier to protect the public at night. But you can see there's very little room here. This is one cross section that we did. As an example, bore pits down 25, almost 25 feet. Existing right of way is shown right here at 40 feet. There are some areas in front of homes where existing right of way is only 33 feet wide. So the pipe is pushed right on that line. And those areas are generally bored. So there won't be the overcut, but it will still be right on the edge of the right of way. Get into clear zone a little bit. Go ahead, the next slide. What clear zone means is here's your edge of pavement. You generally have a shoulder width. That's where your clear zone starts at the edge of pavement. So you count the shoulder width as clear zone. And then anything four to one or flatter gets counted as clear zone for safety purposes. Our four slopes out there are two to one four slopes. So that does not count as clear zone. What the recommendation is, when you have a two to one, when this road was originally put in, there was no requirement for clear zone. So legally and liability wise, we're okay. But any upgrades or work that gets done out there is when you have to meet the current clear zone requirements. Uh, go to the next slide. For a 55 mile an hour speed, clear zone, we have 1,300 vehicles per day. If we had a four to one, it'd be 20 foot clear zone you'd need. That's pretty much clear space where, you know, vehicle goes off the road, they won't hit anything. More steeper than four to one, so it gets into this asterisk. So it's really 20 foot plus. Only thing it says, you need to have a clear recover area at the base of the steep slope. That just won't be there with the bore pit. Recovery is what bore pit will be. So for the next slide. There are some stipulations for temporary traffic control zones on rural two-lane highways. You can have one-way traffic and use that other lane as the 10-foot clear zone. And so I think we'd be okay during the day. But at nights where we run into a problem, I don't feel we'd need the clear zone. You can use the temporary barrier rail. Like I said, that's also going to be hard to get put in there. Next slide. And the utility accommodation policy, there is a section on bore pits for clear zone. It says it should be located in the area beyond the clear zone or a four slope. But that, that's just not possible with the amount of right of way we have out there. So it does say it may be allowed within the four slope if authorized by the agency. But if that's done, bore pits in the clear zone should be protected at all times. That's by backfilling, which really isn't feasible, this temporary barrier rail or other measures.
Who's the agency representative in that rule? They just show, it said approved by the agency representative. Who's the agency?
Yeah, in this case, it would be the county engineer.
The U. Okay.
Um, okay, back to this slide, see. I've also had concerns from the start about just placing this so close to a pavement so deep and what that's going to be now to get it in and in the future. If anything ever goes wrong with this pipe, a joint goes bad or something, we get a suckle out there. It's close enough, in my opinion, that we could compromise with it at some point. Their letter says 8.23 million gallons per day is going through this pipe. So if something does happen to it, there's, there's going to be a mess out there. That's why generally you don't find stuff like this in county rural right of ways. They typically want it outside the right of way. For a couple of reasons. One, there is a stipulation in all county utility permits that if we widen our roads in the future at all, it is their obligation to move this at their cost. That's usually enough to get whoever wants to put something right away to, want to put it outside the right of way to avoid that in the future.
How old is S14?
Boy, uh, I do not know off the top of my head. I would guess at least 75 years old.
So is there, I mean, are we likely to be talking about needing to upgrade it?
There's currently, they reference that. And I mentioned, they asked if we had anything in our five-year program for widening. We don't, but as you can see, within very narrow shoulders out there. If there's any development out there at all in the future, you're probably going to have to bring this up to a better standard. Or we'd like to widen over shoulders out there. We have a lot of these out in the county rural areas, but we just don't have the money to widen them all out. But this is close enough to the city where it could really be a potentially something.
Could I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yep.
I know you're in the midst of this, but it's a great relates, I think. With Highway 30 and the DOT's plans there, has there been any other thoughts for the streets and county roads down there, any requests for paving, widening, any of those kind of things?
Go back to the, to the second slide, I think it is. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, the new overpass going here over 30. When that happens, some of the access is going to be cut off from S14. We have a feeling this is South Est Avenue gravel road, half mile south of city limits. We feel like that's going to get more traffic. So that's in our wish list in the five-year program. We already talked about it, impossible. in our wish list in the five-year program. We already talked about impossible pavement in the future. So we do expect probably more traffic. And if we pave that, development's going on right now over here. Could use S-14, South West to get over there. Uh, so there is already, you know, growth going on.
So that, that additional traffic would be up on the first, is that about half mile or so, best 14 and then South West? So both of those would be getting more traffic because of residential development out there.
Um, I mentioned. Let me just kinda go to the city's letter. I just want to point out a few things in their response to some of my concerns. Under construction in the right-of-way, they they mentioned about my concerns about the bore pits and how that's gonna be protected in size and how it'll be constructed. For the most part, they encourage the use of trench boxes and the contractors, the responsible party comply with the safety requirements during construction. And so a lot of that, when the city, I'm sure, does these projects, they leave some of that up to the contractor. But when you're working in another jurisdictions, right-of-way, I'm gonna need that information upfront. Because once we approve this utility permit, they're gonna go and I can't just leave it up to the contractor's judgment up there. That's not gonna fly in my opinion. So still have a concern about that. The city gave a couple of examples. I keep asking for other examples on where this has been done before. One, to see if anybody's actually done it. And two, it might give me an idea how, how it was done safely in that instance. Not finding, still not finding any good cases. The two they originally pointed out, I talked to and they, I don't think they're very representative. Uh, the DOT one was a very small line, they said, and it wasn't nowhere close to the road. The latest one they gave me was this Warren County project. I called Warren County, discussed it with them, and they said, uh, the vast majority of that project is on private property, like these normally are. There was just, they thought it was maybe 200-foot stretch. They, they could not avoid a county gravel road. So they're actually closing that gravel road completely down and they're actually rebuilding the gravel road as part of the process of doing this. So that this really isn't comparable project to a 55-hour rural highway.
Who's bearing the cost of that gravel road being rebuilt?
Oh, it's, yeah, the city. About that already, we've talked about future S-14 projects. If we ever do anything out there, this potentially could require the movement of the sewer line. No, it would be at the city's cost. And that's why generally these don't happen in county right-of-way because they never wanna have to incur that cost. So they buy an easement, which isn't all that expensive to buy an easement. That's probably, when we talk about the alternatives that were weighed here, I'm not sure the county is really involved in weighing those. So it's hard for me to weigh putting this in county right-of-way. So one alternative that they already explored is putting across along Indian Creek in the lower area through there. They can probably comment on why that, they didn't feel that was a good option. Another option we haven't talked a whole lot about, can you go to the first slide? Yes, I would kinda like to know if they wanna go this S-14 route. You can see the group of houses here. Then on the other side, there's a group of houses here. The power lines go opposite of the houses and the power lines cross the road and go on this side. And the reason, reasoning I was given is because the power lines, why they put it on the side of the road, they did. So really what that did is push the sewer line in front of all the houses. Then they skip right up going in front of the house over here. I would just generally speaking, think it would be cheaper even and much better for the road if they swapped that. Buy an easement on the backside of the power lines and then it'd be opposite of the houses and across the road here. Buy an easement on private property to go all the rest of the way down. They'll be working completely out of the road right-of-way and off, but they'll still be up close to the road. So they'll have access to the money needed. But it seems to be a much better option in my mind. So convinced why that is not a viable option.
So if they were to buy easements to do that, you could it would be easier to widen the shoulders?
Yeah.
And we, we could use our right-of-way to widen the shoulders, which is something you've identified as neat.
City will probably discuss some of these other points in their letter. Ethan, do you want to discuss any illegal aspects? Talked a little bit this morning. He did a little research on my legal questions. One, are we allowed to deny a permit? And two, can we legally even put this within easement for road purposes? I will say the closest thing we've come to, we had a proposal at one point to put some cell towers, which are tall poles in the existing county road right-of-way. And we did say no to that. Uh, they never challenged it legally. So one other example I could think of is we had a gas line that went in North Veins between here and Nevada. And the property owner did not want the gas line to go in front of his place, even though it was in the county road right-of-way. And he got that stopped. I don't know if it got to the legal point where we have a legal opinion on that. But that is a concern out here. A property owner could say, no, I don't want that. Yeah. My property goes to the side of the road. You only have an easement for road purposes. You don't have an easement for the utility of this type.
Yeah, that's really, um, Ethan Anderson, Story County Attorney's Office. What we have here to begin the discussion is a 1939 easement for road purposes granted by the landowners to construct a highway in Story County, Iowa, and to conform to the federal farm-to-market road program. The legal question then becomes, to what extent, for lack of a better term, may a public utility piggyback off of an easement granted to the county for road purposes to put their utility there? In researching this, kinda code section that's important to discuss is 306.46, which says that a public utility may construct, operate, repair, or maintain its utility facilities within a public road right-of-way. So a public utility may construct. The utility facility shall not be constructed or installed in a manner that causes interference with public use of the road. Now, this legislation passed in 2004. And it went to, uh, correct what the legislature felt was a a decision made in a Kielkopf case that they felt was an error. And the distinction of that case was that for utility to get additional easement rights, they'd have to pay the landowner to get the easement rights. The Iowa legislature decided in that 2004 legislation that no, we're gonna say that you may place this in the road right-of-way. Uh, this has led to litigation then over whether or not that legislation is retroactive or prospective. So looking backwards or looking forwards. There's a couple Iowa Utility Board's opinions that said it was retroactive. Uh, landlords challenged this in the case of, uh, NDA Farms LLC and Denise Alba Petitioners versus Iowa Utility Board. And a judge in a district court appeal of that, uh, agency action reversed and said Iowa Utility Board, it was not retroactive. In particular, it pointed out the provisions of Iowa Code 4.5, which require the legislature, if they want to make legislation retroactive, they have to explicitly state that's retroactive. I read you 306.46. Nowhere in there does it say that it's retroactive. Now, this case is ongoing because February 1st, 2021 here, just a couple of months ago, the Iowa Utilities Board went ahead and granted retroactive, uh, easement usage and eminent domain usage. And ignored the district court opinion stating that it was not controlling law, so not a published opinion. Obviously, in my experience, district court opinions are not typically published. And there is a dissent by one of the Iowa Utility Board members that points out quite correctly, in my opinion, that the, uh, conclusion is inescapable. Proper interpretation of 306.46 is that it be applied prospectively only. And it does not change the terms of the road right-of-way easement created more than 25 years before the enactment of 306.46. The easement is for road right-of-way only and for nothing else. So this case is being litigated as we speak. And I think the conclusion, when you're reading 306 and 4.5 together, would stand for the proposition that this is a prospective-only moving-forward law, not looking back to an easement that was granted in 1939 for roadway purposes only. And this is to protect the property interests of those adjoining landowners and requiring the utility easement to purchase additional easement from them to locate the utility. So the question is, may they piggyback off the county easement for roadway purposes? I think the answer is they may if the, uh, governing authority, that is the board, allows it. So that moves into the second question. As Darren discussed, there's several instances of where utilities have been placed in county road right-of-way. And those have typically benefited the adjoining landowner, either in a gas or a telecommunications easement. In this case, there would be no benefit to the adjoining landowner from the Trump sewer. So I think that would play some role in the board's consideration of this permit request. Then finally, does the board have the authority to not deny the permit? Um, absolutely. The code section self-contemplates that if it's gonna interfere with the operation of the road, then they can deny the permit. I think I'm gonna continue to research this, but that's my initial thoughts based upon, uh, the research I've been so far.
I do have a question about public benefits section of the H-30 letter. Section 11 is, is, I when I read in the third paragraph near the bottom, if the proposed Trump sewer is constructed for plan, the adjacent residents would have the opportunity to request voluntary annexation and subsequent connection to the public sewer. They have to do that. They have to be, they have to be annexed into the city of Nevada to hook up to the sewer, correct?
That's correct. Those, those landlords there have to initiate a voluntary annexation.
So that's, uh, brings other things with it. Okay, thank you.
I'd just say that the city's requested an opportunity to discuss this with the board a little bit. So I'll give them the opportunity. But I will say I've handled this like I have any other utility permit request. I assume from the beginning, it can work and we try to work through details to get it there. That's how I handle everyone. This one, I just it's unique in that there is many other alternatives that could be done, but we're not part of that discussion. So I, it's hard for me to weigh those. Two, I think I've pointed out the concerns I still have with it. And I hope the board can understand those. Maybe they'll be able to address some of those for you now.
Could I try to summarize this, Ethan, when you said, to make sure I got it correctly? You're saying that we, the county board, can allow this use in our right of way without going in that that it doesn't have to go back to the land. The landowners should own the land for the easement, which is originally granted for the road purposes?
I'm, I'm saying you may, but it would be landlords then could subject the board to a legal challenge saying you don't have the authority under I-306.46 to take that action. Because 306.46 is prospective only. And what you've done now is you've, essentially, they argue that it's a taking to taking other land without compensation. Because the easement was only to address a permit road, road purposes.
And you would also have to look at subsection one. And the utility facility not being constructed or installed in a manner that causes interference with public use of the road.
That's correct.
That would, that would be one of the things we'd have to consider according to the code. And you're also saying the statute's kind of up in the air right now, or the decision.
Right, right. Because of the, the litigation that ended one phase of litigation, basically, February 1st, 2021. Just the last few months. But I would agree with Darren and the DOT that the board does have the authority to deny a permit request.
Thank you.
Man, can you go to the end of that? I'm not sure if I have another slide or two in there or not before I go over to the city. Oh yeah, I think I did add, uh, I just wanted to point out that another, I kinda mentioned a little bit already, my concern also is once, once we approve the utility permit, it's a unique situation where then it's pretty much turned over to the contractor that I have no control over at that point. Everything has to be set up upfront before we approve the utility permit. It's a unique situation. We have a project of this size going on in the county right-of-way. At that point, I've kinda lost control over regulating it because we approved it. Couple of, is there any slides after this? Yeah, I just wanted to show you a couple of things that have taken place already. Kind of examples of what I'm talking about. This is on 270th. Construction's already started on the actual plan. Out to the south here, this is the county 270th gravel roadway. And they installed the, at the point I saw this, it was sticking up about four or five feet above the ground. It's not very far off the edge. This is a 55-hour gravel road. So I contacted the consultant right-of-way. I had approved nothing at this point in the road right-of-way other than this driveway. They said this was originally planned to go on private property and they made an adjustment, decided to push it in the middle of the county road ditch. Okay, well, that needs to be approved for our office. So they apologized for it. But these are the type of things that happen. Secondly, they wanted to do soil borings along S-14 for engineering purposes. We had some road tile under there. I was concerned about hitting. So I adjusted where they were gonna do the soil borings. And really, the only requirement I put on there that to contact our office, because it required closing down one lane with pile of cars like this would. But they contacted our office before that work started and they did not do that. So the first call I got was from an irate property owner, what the heck's going on in county? And then, don't you guys have any control over this project? I just fear that's what's gonna happen throughout this whole process. That, that's just an additional.
So how long has construction been going on?
How long has it been going on?
Yeah.
I believe a few months now. We got involved with the driveway situation. I don't know how long next. They can answer that. They can look here.
Leave a few months now, we got involved with the driveway situation, I don't know how long next, they can answer that, make them up here.
There's two things happened where you should have been contacted and worked. Or contacted or given approval to. And have that structure in the right way.
This is just on gravel roads, that wasn't quite as a big a deal, but once we get into the highway, fifty mile highway, I have real concerns on what could be happening out there without control. I will let the city come up and give us the board too.
Thanks, Darren. Morning, George.
Good morning, how are you all today?
Good.
Good. That's awesome, uh, I'm gonna let him address you guys, because he has PowerPoint and everything going on. I did just want to ask a couple of questions beforehand. With three oh six forty six, I was wondering, you know, are you, are you talking about the interference during the construction or after the construction or? Because in three oh six, it says that S interfere with the public driveway, right? Use of the road, yeah, interfere with the use of the road, so. I'm just wondering, are you referring to during construction or after construction?
Shall that be constructed or installed in a manner?
Okay, and then the other question I had, I was going to ask dealt with. Clear zones and upgrades, what is considered an upgrade for D O T or the county engineer? Is that any, any improvement to a surface?
Upgrade?
Yeah.
Darren, you might need to come a little bit closer.
Yeah, you, you said upgrade, so that's why I'm referencing upgrade.
I'm just, anything that takes place in the right way. If we define upgrade.
So you mentioned when, when you have a defined upgrade, that you needed to update the clear zones. Because currently, you don't, you have areas that you don't have clear zones, correct? Okay, so what type of upgrade are you referring to? Does this, this, does this mean an upgrade that anything to improve the surface of the highway that people are travel, traveling on? Yes or no? I, I mean.
Actually, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah.
How about? We have a PowerPoint presentation, because it's not interrogation right now. We'll see what is in the PowerPoint, and then we can come back and address questions.
Well, I was just curious what his definition of an upgrade was.
That's great, but if, that's not what this is for right now.
Correct. My apologies.
Thanks.
I, I have a PowerPoint, if you would allow me to share my screen. Yes, I am, yes, Michael Roth, R O T H.
His name is Michael Roth?
Roth, R O T H, yep.
Let's each agree, or agree, yeah.
So thank, yes, thank you very much, my name is Mike Roth, I am with H R Green Incorporated. We are the city of Nevada's consulting engineering firm, we've been working with the city of Nevada. On this project, we also do other city engineering services for the city of Nevada as well. So thank you, some board here for allowing us to present. I'd like to give you some background information as well, I'd like to respond to a few of the comments and, and statements that Darren made, and fill in a few holes there for you. Also, we're all on the same page here. So I do have a short presentation, but also, as we go through this, I want to go back through some comments that got made. So. So the project itself, it's, the entire project consists of a new wastewater treatment facility for the city of Nevada. It also includes the construction of a, of a trunk sewer line to transmit or trans, I'm sorry. Convey flow from the existing treatment facility site, which is located up off of, up north of Highway thirty. Down to the new facility, which the city purchased the, the treatment plant site. About three miles south of town. As part of this whole process. The city is required to go through a planning step with the D N R to essentially review all alternatives that are available for. Both treatment and the conveyance. So there's a facility plan process that the Iowa D N R requires that the city completes. That has to be turned in, reviewed, and approved by the Iowa D N R. We completed that work for the city back a couple of years ago. Within that, we identified and looked at a couple of different options for treatment. But also a couple of different options for the actual conveyance and the trunk sewer in between the existing and the new site. And. The, Darren had indicated that we had at some point said we were going to go down, follow Indian Creek. That's not correct. That was an alternative that was in the facility plan. But it was not the recommended alternative as per the facility plan. The recommended alternative for the trunk sewer has always been down S fourteen to the new site. Now, the reasons that we did not choose and did not recommend for following West Indian Creek. Were economic and feasibility, as well as environmental issues with following that alignment. And, and for those reasons, that was not the recommended alternative for the trunk sewer. And, and such, the D N R reviewed and approved the facility plan with the recommended alternative of the trunk sewer along S fourteen. So. Essentially what happens, the orange square is the existing treatment facility site. The blue line is a force main. And this is actually needed because the existing site sits low. All the flow has to be pumped up because of the topography. And we want to minimize the amount of force main link. So there's a force main that goes from the existing treatment plant, north side of Highway thirty. It will follow the overpass of S fourteen on, over Highway thirty, or it's going to be underneath Highway thirty, but that's the alignment. It comes down S fourteen and then ties into a gravity sewer, the trunk sewer, which is the pink line. That follows S fourteen within the right of way. The blue line and, and the proposed route here has all been confirmed with the D O T, received their approval. We've worked with them to accommodate the changes on S fourteen and that proposed changes on over Highway thirty.
So, excuse me, how, the D O T has approved just across, across thirty?
Correct.
That's correct, this alignment has been reviewed with them, because that, that's their jurisdiction.
Understand.
So then.
That was on the agenda two, two council meetings ago.
So at the, the, the alignment that's been presented to, at a thirty percent level, we are only at a thirty percent design level for this, this trunk sewer and the force main and the lift station. And then it falls two hundred and seventieth street over to the existing treatment facility site, which. As part of this whole process, you know, you're required to obtain a conditional use permit for the treatment facility site. And the decision made by the county board of adjustment was that the trunk sewer needed to be a part of that conditional use permit application process. So we included that as part of everything at that time, and I have a timeline here later. But I do want you to, to recognize that in the overall schedule of this entire project. The design work that on the treatment facility site has preceded the design work of the trunk sewer. Strictly due to the scope and size of the treatment facility and the duration needed for construction. That design process happened first, that was completed, it has been bid, awarded for a contract. Actually, a couple of contracts, and it's under construction. That construction process in aggregate will take approximately three years to complete all necessary permits on the treatment facility site itself. The trunk sewer is not as long the duration of construction. Thus, in order to work this all into the overall big schedule, we pushed things, certain parts forward, had other parts happen later. And at the end, everything will come together to be functioning at the same required date that everything needs to be operational, for the city to comply with the D N R's requirements. Overall, the project schedule, we've, we've taken this whole entire big project and broken it up into four different phases. There's two phases, phases one and two are related to the treatment facility site themselves. And phase three and four relates to the lift station, force main, and trunk sewer. Phase four is essentially the force main and trunk sewer elements, so the piper, anything that comes over on Highway thirty and down S fourteen and two seventy. Here's a, just more detailed information, here's the force main alignment, north side of Highway thirty crosses at the proposed overpass of S fourteen. And follows that realignment of S fourteen down to. Existing S fourteen alignment on the west side of the road. As you're all aware, once this overpass happens, you know, the at grade crossing of S fourteen on Highway thirty will be removed and eliminated completely. All access will come off from the west. There will be no direct access of Highway thirty here for accessing S fourteen, so this all changes. And then ultimately. The D O T's plan is that the at grade crossing at Sixth Street on Highway thirty will be eliminated as well. And because of that, we have coordinated with the D O T to remove the existing utilities that are within here as part of this project. Because ultimately, the D O T will not allow any utilities within the Highway thirty corridor, once, or once Sixth Street is at a crossing is removed. The trunk sewer alignment itself, again, we're placing it in the right of way, and this has always been the plan and always been what's presented to the county as we have started this entire project. Again, we have worked with Darren from the beginning about what the requirements are in terms of placing the utility within the right of way. And we had identified those early on of what the, the county engineer would require us to do to construct this within the right of way. There's been talk about, we're replacing this with respect to the overhead power lines. And we are placing the, or we're replacing the sewer on the opposite side of the power lines for a couple of different reasons. First. The power lines themselves are, are located at the edge of the right of way easement, so they are currently within that right of way easement is where they're at. They are very high voltage lines themselves, so it's a kind of. Dangerous to perform construction activities in close proximity to overhead power. It can be done, however, it's. You know, it would be our requirement, or the city's requirement, to pay any cost associated with protecting that overhead power because it is an existing utility. We have worked with Consumers Energy, who owns those overhead power lines, to identify the costs associated with supporting or temporarily protecting those overhead power. And or even relocating that to allow for the placement of the sewer line. The costs are extremely prohibitive. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars per mile, or not a mile, but even, you know, shorter distances and that. To move that overhead power, plus maintaining power during that time period. It's just really not a feasible option. And thus, we've elected to come up with alignment that places the trunk sewer on the opposite side of the overhead power lines to avoid those conflicts. We've also identified areas and working with Darren about what the requirements would be for crossing the road when we do need to go back and forth as the overhead power does jump back and forth. It was our understanding from the very beginning that Darren will not allow open cut installation or removal of any pavement on S fourteen. To install the, the trunk sewer line. Thus, we have proposed to use trenchless construction methods and require those to do any road crossings to not disturb any of the pavement. We've also elected to do trenchless construction under two hundred and seventieth street, though it's our understanding that an open cut installation would have been allowed there. In order to do so, but we've elected to not do that. We want to maintain that roadway, plus there's, some other considerations there for doing trenchless construction. As it was presented, there, we are pursuing and planning to obtain temporary construction easements from adjacent property owners along the alignment. This will allow for the temporary use of that land area for the construction purposes of not only excavation of an open trench, if necessary. Placement of the bore pit, portions of that bore pit, within that temporary construction easement area. Placement of stockpile or excavated materials, not only topsoil, but of subsurface soils. Materials, pipe material, vehicular access, contractors' work activities would be allowed within that temporary construction easement. Those easements would be obtained from the private property owner, those will be negotiated with the private property owner, and compensation will be provided to the landowner. For the use of their property on the temporary basements. The easement would have requirements of restoration of the temporary easement and also all. Compensation for a period after the work was complete and the, the area was restored. Due to diminished use and their value of the, of the area. We have secured and are working with J C G Land Services here from Nevada, they are assisting us with. Doing the easement acquisition process of this project and are working on, you know, it's currently, we're kind of. Ready to start that process, but we're kind of on hold at the moment. There was an issue about field drain tile and roadway tiles. Those roadway tiles, we did, reached out and asked for information on where those were located. We were provided photos of the original plans from, of roadway plans from around the nineteen thirties, forties. However, when asked for further information on specific as-built locations, we were told that none of that information is available. So, we know that there's road tile adjacent to the road surface, you know, in areas, but exactly where it's at, there's no documentation on. We've also been told that there are some private field tiles coming in and out of the right of way. We have spoken with a couple of different landowners, and they have identified to us where those are, we are working with them. To physically locate where those field tiles are to accommodate those with our design. So, we have reached out to property owners in order to find all this information that's been asked about and been requested to do so by the county in previous meetings. There's some other things with some staging areas needed, but I won't get into those details right now. Our timeline overall for this, for this project on the trunk sewers, we are looking to start negotiations with the property owners for obtaining those easements here. We're hoping to be able to start last month and work through June, finalizing those in June, finishing up our design at the same time. And then submitting the permit applications as required for the county and the state for this project in July. Bidding would happen in the fall and or, you know, somewhere between the fall this year and the winter of early next year. With construction starting in the spring of next year through the spring of twenty twenty three. So, there was a comment made about the duration of construction of being about a one-year period. That would be correct, but that would be for the entire length of the project. The entire route of S fourteen would not be isolated and closed down to one length for that entire duration. It would be staged in a manner to only correspond to where the work is happening. At the point when the work is done, the roadway would be opened for two-way traffic. We would only be proposing to do a single lane closure and a pileup car and all the appropriate safety and traffic control measures. In the areas where constructions occur during that duration. The rest of the time, it would be open as normal. Ultimately, we're looking to complete construction in about May of twenty twenty three, and then use of the facility would happen in about July of twenty twenty three. This would comply and correspond to the completion of the construction on the treatment facility site. And would also comply with the requirements that the city has to, to meet the discharge permit requirements as issued by the Iowa D N R for wastewater to West Indian Creek. So I want to give a little more background on what we've done so far, up to this point, here with story counting on this project overall. So back in May of twenty twenty. So back in May of twenty twenty, we were required to do a conceptual review application with the planning and development staff. That application was submitted on May the fifth and a, and a meeting was held with P and D staff as well as the story county engineer on May the seventh. We received, um, some questions, uh, about our application the morning of that meeting from planning and development staff as well as, as the story county engineer. We went through all of those, uh, comments and questions in that review meeting, uh, at which time there was not any questions brought up about the alignment in terms of being located within the S fourteen right of way. As part of the conditional use permit report, we were required to submit a traffic report to story county engineer for the site, also showing traffic counts along S fourteen and two hundred and seventieth street that was provided in August. And then that was included with our initial conditional use permit application, um, in August of, August seventeenth of last year. Prior to the full Board of Adjustment public hearing, there was a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting held on September the second, which we went through the conditional use permit application with Planning and Zoning Committee members. At the conclusion of that meeting, the planning and zoning had indicated they were recommending approval of the CUP application before the upcoming September seventeenth meeting. We held that public hearing at that time with the board. There were some issues and questions raised by, uh, members of the public. The board essentially tabled the decision requesting us to reach back out to property owners uh, with respect to the, really the trunk sewer alignment. It was the initial application that had the trunk sewer coming down S fourteen and then coming across private property on the south end. And it was the comments raised by, uh, property owners at the September seventeenth Board of Adjustment meeting, which prompted the board to table the decision, directed us to reach back out to the property owner and come to a reasonable solution for all parties. We did so following that meeting, uh, based off of the feedback from the concerned property owner. It was evident that they were opposed to working with the city or us to find any sort of solution across private property. And thus, we chose to change the alignment, revise it, and keep the trunk sewer within the S fourteen right of way. In the meeting on September seventeenth, the Board of Adjustment even made comment about how it felt that it would be better to locate the trunk sewer within the right of way of S fourteen versus placing on private property due to concerns of residents in the area. So, we moved in that direction, given the, what information we heard, we got back from the Board of Adjustment. We set our revisions of our CUP application back planning and zoning in October first of last year and then had a second Board of Adjustment public hearing on October twenty-second. At that time, the Board of Adjustment approved the CUP application with the conditions of locating, uh, the sewer, uh, in the right of way, also some additional, uh, uh, conditions related more to the treatment facility site and, uh, ultimately allowed us to, to begin the process of, you know, detailed design. So, um, based off of those decisions, we moved forward and developed our thirty percent, uh, set of plans, which were, again, as Darren mentioned, sent to him along with an email, in an email containing additional design details that addressed some of those requirements that he had when we first met and talked about what he would require for the trunk sewer, and that was sent on March the twelfth of this year. We held a public informational meeting on March the fifteenth with the, for the general public and anybody who wanted to attend. It was a in-person option at city call as well as a Zoom call available. We notified all property owners along the trunk sewer route. We had, uh, three or four property owners attend in person and about the same number attend on the Zoom call. We went through a lot of the similar information that I presented previously to this slide and that, but that was held on March fifteenth. On March the sixteenth, as Darren indicated, he sent a letter to the city, uh, with some of his, with his concerns on the project. Um, based off of the content of the letter, we felt that it would be beneficial to sit down and meet with him to go through those concerns, which we did on March the twenty-fifth. There was some reference project information that we sent to Darren in regard to other experience that, uh, with similar projects. He mentioned too, we sent another one actually to him, uh, as well in Northwest Iowa, which, uh, you know, was very similar. And I'm, I'm going to be straight with you, there is no project, there are no two projects that are exactly identical. So, I do not have an exact project that matches this project perfectly. But I have multiple projects that myself, I have been in charge of and designing, um, for clients as well as our, our, our firm has designed over many years. So, um, you know, did we give every single project that we've ever done? No, but we gave at least three that were of very similar nature, all which were completed by H R Green for our clients in conjunction with county engineers, Iowa DOT, following all the same requirements that have been asked for here. So, we provided those, uh, later that day after that meeting. There was a follow-up email with additional questions from Darren, uh, back, um, here in April the third. And then we provided that formal response, the letter that you have in front of you on April the sixth. Advance the slide, huh? Okay. Um, so to date, we've received the following approvals. So, on that May seventh, twenty twenty meeting with planning and zoning commission, they had indicated that they were going to be recommending approval of the conditional use permit to the Board of Adjustment, um, in the next month. They did so, uh, they, you know, they got tabled. Ultimately, the CUP with the trunk sewer alignment that has been talked about here today, uh, was approved by the Board of Adjustment in October of last year. Darren also mentioned the soil borings along, uh, Highway, um, S fourteen. Uh, we have hired, uh, a consultant who is performing that work. They completed and, and turned in the use of railway permit to complete those soil borings on, on S fourteen. They were sent into the story county engineer's office and approval was given to proceed with doing soil borings uh, south of two hundred and sixtieth street, and that happened to here on March nineteenth. Those were, that was given south of two hundred and sixtieth because we knew that there is no field, or there's no road tile south of two sixty. We have, we have plans and needs for soil borings north of there, um, up towards Highway thirty. We are not doing those at this time, we're, we're holding off. Um, we have also moved those from the original planned locations to further, get those further away from the road for any, any concerns related to the road tile. But we did get approval to proceed. Um, our consultant did notify, uh, with, when they, they were starting the work. So, I, I'm, I'm not sure how, you know, again, that was not me personally, but our, our consultant was required and did provide notification of prior to them beginning their work on the road. I would have to find out if they did in writing or not.
About the, how much moving of that access cover, the access into the ditch?
That, yeah, so that issue and, and, and I, Darren is correct. So what happened there, that was on the treatment plant site. So there was a manhole that, that he had shown in that photo that was originally in the plan outside of the right of way, just adjacent to it. During the construction back, because that's currently happening, um, as phase one contract, we had a conflict, they found a conflict in the field with locating it at that location and we issued a field order to relocate it to avoid that conflict. And as I, as Darren did indicate, um, he, he notified us and, and I have told Darren this, that it was an oversight on our part about obtaining the, the utility permit for doing that change. I offered, at the time I was notified that it needed to happen, I offered to complete the utility permit application immediately and get that approved for. It was decided that Darren would allow that manhole to be part of the overall trunk sewer utility permit application and that I did not need to fill out and send any utility permit for that specific manhole at that time. The photo that's shown was taken approximately just after the construction of that manhole, prior to complete backfill of that manhole. It is actually located within the driveway approach coming off of two hundred and seventieth street. It will be completely buried up to flush with the surface of the road. We have obtained the driveway permit from the county for that access and it has been approved and that is where it is located. So the photo is not representative of the final completed construction at this time. So, it's, it is, yes, it's outside, it's within the right of way. It was an oversight on our part. We offered to immediately complete the application and submit that and were told that we did not need to do so and we could include it within the trunk sewer utility permit when we were ready to fill that up. You know, I, Darren went through, uh, you know, our letter here and there's a few things I'll, I'll follow up on that too as well. Um, but it's, you know, there's, there's been some discussion about the applicability of the story county utility permit, uh, for this project. You know, within the utility permit itself, the language indicates, you know, that the permit applies to pipelines and utilities within the right of way. You know, it is somewhat vague in terms of not really covering every potential utility, but it does appear that the permit would have a language that seems to apply to this project. Many of the concerns that Darren's raised in his letter to, to the city as well as brought up here, especially with regard to the liability, are already addressed in the utility permit application itself. Item number six, or item number eight within that utility permit essentially holds harmless accounting from any liability related to the project. By approval of that permit, you know, the, the applicant essentially assumes that liability. So that's already in that, that application. Um, additionally, within the actual permit itself and even the, the code, um, there's really the very limited design standards for utilities that we would have to try to follow or meet. And thus, we've reached out to Darren about what he's going to require and we definitely will be and are attempting to, you know, work with, with him to fulfill those requirements and to, uh, you know, follow good engineering practices for this project. Uh, specifically in chapter thirty-three of the code, there is no design standards for utilities in the right of way. It's just use of the right of way, um, is what that chapter indicates. Uh, as part of our overall design, we are following the, uh, Iowa DOT utility accommodation policy. Uh, we're very familiar with that, we use that on most, all of our projects where it is applicable. Um, the other thing too I'll point out that I noticed that was presented was the, um, some of the information that you saw with respect to some of the requirements are per the utility accommodation permit or utility, utility accommodation policy. Um, actually, the permit itself, the utility permit itself references like for traffic control, it traff, it, it references, um, chapter six of the N U T C D standard, which is not the same as the utility accommodation permit policy per the DOT. So, for traffic control, it appears that the county's utility permit requires the city to follow the N U T C D and not the utility accommodation permit policy. So, we are, you know, not that we wouldn't look at the Iowa DOT utility accommodation policy, but it doesn't seem like that's completely a hundred percent applicable and, and only applies here. Um, and again, as has been mentioned, we have not, and the city has not formally submitted a utility permit application at this time. We are not at the point where we would be able to do so and provide all the necessary information within that application because we're not completed with the design at this point, so. So a couple of other things that I'd like to, to go over, um, that were presented. You know, the alignment, it's always been on, on S fourteen, that's always been what's been presented to the county. The construction period duration, yes, we're anticipating a year, but the entire area would not be, um, uh, would not be, uh, closed down for a whole one year. Uh, bore pits, there was a, there was a comment about the number of bore pits. Um, I don't believe that the number that was given was, is accurate. Um, we will have bore pits and, and the reason that we are doing some trenchless construction is for a couple of reasons. First, there are some, uh, the road crossings, uh, we're doing boring that because we're not allowed to tear open the road. There's also some constraints with respect to, uh, structures adjacent to the right of way, which they're too close and thus, open cut installation would not be feasible to allow, you know, protection of those, of those structures. Therefore, we've identified locations to where to do trenchless construction to not, uh, disturb those structures and require any sort of removal or replacement. We're also looking at doing trenchless construction in areas where it would not be feasible to maintain access to properties, so to keep their driveways open. But the intent of the entire project is to keep access to everyone's property in some way, shape or form throughout the duration of construction. We would not close off anybody's access to their property while this line would be installed. The other reason that we're looking at doing some trenchless construction is due to the depth of the sewer. And this was addressed in that letter, but really, we have, we are very, we're constrained on both ends of this, of the project, of what elevations that pipe needs to be at. The reason that the pipe gets deep is, is only due to the photography along S fourteen. We are minimizing the depth of the sewer line to be as shallow as practical and not adjusting slopes or anything to make it excessively deep. So, when we get twenty feet deep, it's strictly because the land rises and there's a hill. And we're maintaining the same grade, but on the north end of that strap, we may only be ten feet deep. But since we're continuing on the same slope and then the, and then the pipe, and then it rises, you know, we got a hill there and now all of a sudden the, the buried depth of that pipe becomes twenty feet. That would not be, that's not a desirable, you know, thing that we want. And thus, with our original alignment, that's why it did go through private property to avoid those issues. By routing it through that private property with the initial application, we are able to maintain a buried depth of approximately about ten feet the entire way. But there's a hill there by the intersection of two hundred and seventieth and S fourteen, which puts that cover a buried depth in twenty feet. So, you know, it's not that we're purposely trying to make it deep, it's just the lay of the land is such that it ends up that way. Um, a couple of other things here, now, there were some figures presented with how the bore pits would be located. This has all been addressed as well. And the DOT utility accommodation policy requires that all work happens behind the toe of the force loop. So, that means anything coming off the road, we'd have to be worked from the bottom of the ditch back. That is the current design. All that, all the excavation will be behind the toe. So that is what the DOT requires and thus, we are following the same here. The concern with respect to, um, safety with the bore pits and being open in clear zones um, is a little muddled. And I say that because the existing road of S fourteen is not even compliant with current size design standards for that roadway as it is.
Wouldn't that be the best point of this build?
Correct. And, and as such,
And that's why I was asking the upgrade question.
You know, so there, there are presently not the required clear zones on that roadway to meet standards. The way that we interpret the requirement to comply with what was shown is not really related to the utility installation. Those requirements are a reflection of design standards for the road itself, for the design of the roadway. So, the table and the chart that was presented is what the roadway design requires. It's not something that the utility requires for a clear zone. This pipe will be buried below the ground, there will not be anything protruding above the surface once it is built. The, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to get into the legal discussion related to three oh six forty-six there. Um, you know, I don't know how anybody would ever be able to comply with the requirement of, you know, you can't impede the use of the road, um, you know. Even, even if there was resurfacing done on that road for the roadway purposes itself, that would inherently, you know, violate that requirement. So, you know, if, if no act- You know, if, if no activity is allowed whatsoever, then, then none should be. The other thing that with respect to that, which we discussed.
Just so that we don't have to go back. So the, the issue about the clear zones. It's not necessarily that the pipe is going to be buried when it's all done. I believe it's that while the work is happening, it's dangerous. Not that once you're done, it's going to be buried.
And, and that's why we're saying, how, how are we supposed to work in a clear zone when you guys can't even provide a clear zone?
But our, our, our proposal addresses, addresses the safety issues that were raised with respect to that. So by proposing that, uh, there would be a lane closure. And a pilot car used around the work area during the time of construction would be occurring. Would be the appropriate means to address that issue and the standard approved approach to do so. During the day. In the evening, the, the proposed is that any excavation for an open trench. Would be required to be backfilled prior to the lane closure being taken off and the roadway reopened. So an open excavation would not be allowed in a, in an open trench area where the pipe is going in overnight. With respect to the bore pits themselves, we have proposed that the bore pit is covered. Using a method of steel plates or, or, or a method that they would be, be covered over. So they would not be left open. We would also provide barrier protection adjacent to the bore pit along with the, um. Vehicle impact barrels, that, you know, big yellow water barrels at, at the ends to protect those. Any sort of barriers from anybody that would come off the road. Very similar to you see on all sorts of overpasses, guardrails, all throughout all this, all, all the areas. Now I have, I am not a traffic safety engineer myself, but our firm employs many traffic safety engineers. I have reached out to all of our tra- our traffic safety engineers in our Des Moines office. And presented these concerns to them with respect to the safety. They've reviewed these and indicated to me that the proposed solutions to address these are all standard. Typical, uh, things that are done and allowed by other jurisdictions all over the state, not only in other counties, but also by the DOT. So, you know, I, I don't know what we can necessarily do beyond providing. You know, these reasonable measures that are accepted elsewhere with. Respect to the safety and meeting compliance with the N U T C D standard, which is what the permit, uh, requires us to do. So, you know, that with respect to the clear zone, you know, those are, those are. Means that we're trying to address those issues and concerns. We feel that what we presented is. Very reasonable and has been accepted elsewhere as standard practice and good engineering design for, for those situations. Going back a little bit to the use of the, of the right of way. It's our understanding that the county has already allowed other utilities to be placed within the right of way on S fourteen. Specifically rural water, um, there's telephone and there's also overhead power. It was, we were told during our March twenty-fifth meeting that the rural water utility was not required to obtain a utility permit to place their utility within the easement. And so there is no utility permit and it was granted to be installed without the need for a utility permit approval. It does not completely follow or it is not completely within the right of way. But it does cross the right of way and it does also parallel the right of way in certain areas. It was within that existing roadway easement. So it's our understanding that the county already has allowed other utilities within this easement. Which is being said that it's necessarily, we can't be piggybacking on. So I guess we're a little unsure of how. Those utilities were allowed, but this utility would not.
You're saying the rural water was only to cross, was crossing the road?
No, your rural water actually does, is within and parallels the road in certain areas of that easement.
Parallels the road in an easement.
In, in the roadway easement. It's in the roadway easement itself.
So those utilities, the property owners are benefiting directly through those utilities. Is that right?
Not necessarily. There's no requirement that they have to hook up to any of it.
But they don't have to annex into, voluntarily annex and the city had invaded to hook up on, on rural water.
That would be correct because, you know, the, in any, in any, any municipality. Their ordinances generally state that for use of public services, they would need to be a member of, of the community. I mean, it, it's not very, you know, that's.
I'm not arguing and I'm just saying that's a distinction. That is a distinction.
Well, I mean.
But it still is the possibility.
It's still the possibility, as we've pointed out in the letter, that there is a benefit to the public to allow this to be located here. It gives them the option to connect to a public sewer, which they currently do not have. There is no reason that, you know, I can't speak for Jordan or the city council, but I don't know why the city would. Deny a voluntary annexation request for a property owner. If they would want to, want to join and be a member of the city. And if they do and the services are there, that actually gives them incentive to do so. I don't know if any property owner would really want to voluntary annex without having the availability of public services.
Be adjacent to the city to be annexed.
That is correct. You can also.
All along S fourteen, you agree to annex if you're at the end and you want to get benefit of the sewer.
That would be the property owner's responsibility.
That makes it pretty difficult. I'm just saying, that's a very limited benefit in my mind.
And is it that the property owners don't want you to put the sewer line through their property?
That is the reason why we had to change it in the conditional use permit is because of, of that reason.
The one property.
So we, we wanted to, uh, want to make it easier on the, the property owners and we also wanted to make it cheaper for the taxpayers. So they didn't have to spend as much money. And we're, and we're not, we're here to find a solution to make this work. We need our sewer plant. I mean, it serves our public, it serves industry, it serves everybody in the community. So. I mean, this is a necessity. So we're, we're trying to figure out a solution here that we can all work together and, and make it happen.
The, the thing about placing it in the right of way is that. That, that area currently is really not usable by the landlord. By having to obtain a permanent easement, permanently takes and diminishes the use of that property of the property owner. For the, for the duration of that, of that easement. So if the city has to go and obtain permanent easement outside of the right of way to place the sewer line. That property owner no longer has the use of that property anymore. It becomes used only for the sewer line. The county can't go in and extend the roadway out into that permanent sanitary sewer easement. That easement would be strictly and solely dedicated for the, the trunk sewer itself and no other purpose. So the property owners actually lose the benefit of some of their, use of their existing land. By the city needing to go and obtain a permanent easement from them to place the sewer. You, you can, but you can't build a house, you can't build a structure on it.
You can still farm around it and everything. You're not actually losing farmable acres.
And what you're looking at is farmland. That's why I say, how do they lose them? How do they lose it?
They're not actually losing the actual, the farmland. Because it's going under. They can still farm it. Correct.
So I guess at this point, we're, you know, we're here to really just present where we are today. We've. Moved forward with this project and the cities moved forward with this project. Based off of the understanding of, kind of previous approvals and discussions with respect to this alignment. We've been told through various meetings that the preferred route is actually to put it in the right of way. And so we've tried to work as best we can to make that work, though there are certain areas that. It is to the disadvantage of the city to put it there, but.
I need to, I need to clarify one thing. Make sure we're agreeing on something. When you're talking about the board of adjustment approving this. You understand the board of adjustment has nothing to do with use of the right of way. Or approval of, of this is a good thing in terms of engineering. The board of adjustment approves land use. So I think if you're relying on, well, the board of adjustment said this was okay. That's only one of several. Things that has to happen. Do you agree with me?
I would agree. I'd also add to the fact though that during that process, the story county engineer also. Agreed to the use of the, of the right of way for it as well. And that was the direction we were, and the indication we were given. There was, there was minimal dissent provided with to location of using the right of way.
Every time since you've submitted a proposal to use S fourteen, my comments were. The utility permit process is not up to the board adjustment. It's a separate process. It's up to me and the board supervisor. That was my comment every time. So there was not, there was no approvals or recommendation from me at that point. I said it's a separate process.
We, we, we agree with that completely. Don't, don't argue that at all. And, and completely understand that the county or the city is required to complete and file the application. But I'm not sure how the city is supposed to complete an application with, without doing the design. First, in order to be able to fill that permit out and provide the details necessary. I mean, we've followed, the city has followed the process through the county of. Trying to work through this project to determine what was acceptable. At the point of going through the conditional use permit and the fact that the county required that the trunk sewer also be included in the site. Use of this treatment facility. The city complied and provided all the information they had at that point in time in order to. Keep the process moving. Those are the first steps that the city was required to do with the county for this project. So I guess I'm not sure how the city is supposed to move forward if. They don't at least have some indication from the county of what would or would not be acceptable. Which seems like during the conditional use permit process. The initial plan was found not to be acceptable by the county. We came back, revised the plan, presented it and were given approval based off of. The use of the, the use of the land based off of that plan. The next steps would be then to detail and more, and more detail what that trunk sewer line will be in order to complete. The application, submit it for your decision and consideration. So I guess we're here trying to understand. Where we need to go and, and we, and we've been trying, we've been working with Darren in his office. To address, uh, his concerns. We feel that, you know, the information that's provided has been. Reasonable and sound based off of solid engineering design and judgment. You know, I understand that he has authority and to give a recommendation. I guess we're here presenting our side of, of this and how we see it. And really ultimately want to walk away with being able to address the concerns that the board supervisors would have. With respect to this project and, and complying. So we're not looking to stir any requirements here. We're not looking to. Get out of the process or sidestep anything. We just are trying to understand how we can.
Move forward.
Move forward and, 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 and allow the city to complete this very important project.
Well, I want to make sure, Mr. Rob, there's something in your letter that I, I need more information on. And it's, um. Under item five, future S fourteen projects, it's, uh, program B. If and when any expansion of S fourteen is needed, it would be affected by the true trunk sewer location within the right of way. The city would follow the requirement of the utility permit to relocation of the same. As all other utilities located in the right of way in conflict. So you're saying that if this board supervisor said if we were to widen. S fourteen and we said in future we need to widen the shoulders, widen the road, whatever. And it was a condition of our permit that the city of Nevada would move this trunk along.
If that would be the requirement of permit, then yes, they'd have to do that.
They would have to do that. What would that cost taxpayers?
It would depend on what the, you know, what the relocation would be, what would be required.
How much does the trunk sewer cost?
Currently, the trunk sewer costs along S fourteen, well, this. This is actually from the facility plan. The, the cost was about eight point five million dollars.
How much of that is, uh, that earthwork excavation?
Uh, I don't have that broken down during that.
Took a cost of eight, nine dollars in today's dollars.
Uh, that would be, that would be the entire.
That'd be entire project. I was just trying to do the earthwork side of things because that's really what they will be doing. They'll, they'll have to redig, excavate.
When would you relocate it too?
I mean, if you guys widened the roadway, you'd still have the right of way. So we, we'd be able to move it over, wouldn't we?
I, I think it really depends on what, I mean, it depends on what the, the widening would be.
We have no idea.
I, I, unfortunately, I can't give you an exact dollar amount or exactly what I do because I don't know exactly what county's doing. I mean, that solution would need to be engineered at that time to comply with the requirements. So it would be no different than any other utility that's already there. I mean, they would be required to move if they're in conflict with the road, you know. Wait, the, the city would have to comply with the same.
Do you have any plans on doing anything with S fourteen?
Well, what I brought up earlier was with highway thirty and that changed there. We've been told there's going to be more traffic down there. There's been, I think we were asked by the city of Nevada to consider a south S, whether we pave that. So who knows? I mean, that's, that's where, that's where Nevada's developing. So I, we can't. No, we already, we're going to have to resurface it sometime soon. I believe, Mark Madera, he's nodding.
When was the last time you resurfaced it?
I don't know. But it's new.
It is.
Are you, are you with the city, sir?
I am with the city. That's, you know, if, if you do.
Can you, can you state your name?
I'm sorry.
That's Jeremy.
I'm Jeremy Grill. I'm the director of how it works. My question is, if you do upgrade S fourteen, you're going to have to acquire a lot of right of way to meet the four to one slope. The six foot stabilize slope, the four to one slope, the nuclear zone. So ultimately the question is. If, if you're going to do an upgrade, you need to purchase land codes. Unless you offset the right of way by everything on one side. And then the city would have to relocate our trunk sewer still on your right of way and move it out to the near right of way. But, I mean, that's going to be.
Your right of way would be, would be.
Would be so much wider.
Yeah. So you'll have more room in your right of way if you.
You do an upgrade, you gotta go to a six foot shoulder so you could safely pull off the road. And then you gotta beat a four to one clear zone, which.
So that's what I was getting at, the upgrade.
You know, you're six.
It's an upgrade that we have to improve.
Your six feet of right of way now is going to go to, who knows, you know? And that's why you see the right of ways. So.
And when it comes to safety, we're all about doing whatever we can to keep people safe. Like he was saying, we'll backfill, we'll put the plates in, we'll get a flagger, we'll have a, a pilot vehicle. We will do all of that, um, to keep everybody safe. You know, that's, that's our number one concern.
That's admirable, but, oh, I heard, um. You say just that our utility permit says where the county is not liable.
Correct.
That's on our form. That's a, that's verbiage on our form. That's not anything that happens in case there's. An unfortunate thing happens and it gets taken to court. That, that isn't.
Our, uh, our attorney is on. Maybe she can speak on, on that side of things.
I, I, I just, I just want to make the point that I don't think the county can just right of way, it's, you know. You can't say, oh, we won't be liable. The one thing, the county engineer is responsible for safety on county roads, which he takes seriously. And the second thing is the courts decide who's liable and something if there's.
Correct. And you're going to be named in the lawsuit no matter what because it's a county road. So I mean.
Exactly.
But it doesn't, yeah, but, yeah.
I think, I think we can all agree though, that we're all concerned about safety. I don't think anyone here is saying that we're not concerned about safety. I think we're all on the same page. I think we're all on the same page.
A question. Who's doing construction observation right now?
For the uh this work on facility site.
Jeff Liska and.
H R Green, H R Green.
H R Green is doing.
And the city, it's fifty fifty. Never H R Green can't do it. The city's there, vice versa.
Okay. I have kind of concern that this um utility access cover got put in the right of way and whoever's doing construction observation, whoever's in charge of it didn't say, gee, we should contact county. That's not a good beginning on this.
And as I stated before, it was a modification made based off of uh an issue in the field during construction. And it was the oversight on our part to reach out and obtain that permit. When we were notified, we immediately offered to complete the application to rectify that issue and were told that it wouldn't be necessary. So again, we apologize. Things do change in construction, things come up in any construction in the field that do modify ultimately what's on the plans originally. And that's what happened here. So.
I I think that's part of the concern, though, is how involved will Darren be able to be? I mean, accidents happen, mistakes happen. Of course they do. And I'm glad you didn't have to jump through a whole bunch of hoops afterwards. But the fact that it happened raises the concern that.
So are you, so I guess my question is, would you guys be if we included Darren more frequent and we had some sort of a setup to allow him to kind of overlook everything, will that kind of help a little bit or?
I would hate to ask him to do it if he's uncomfortable. If he's uncomfortable with the safety of a project as as presented, I would be uncomfortable to put him in that role.
And I have a clarifying question for Ethan, actually. So Ethan, did you say that there was litigation in regards to, what was it? An issue related to three oh six dot four six? And is it in conjunction with then Iowa Code four point five, I guess?
Yes, that's correct. So um the procedural history of the case regards of Ames Mid-American Energy Line that goes through Story and Polk County. And uh the two I utility boards administrative hearings approve the use, approve the utility using three oh six point forty six to locate that within the right road. The petition on judicial review was brought challenging both administrative law decisions. And the ruling judicial review from Judge Hanson of Polk County found that, no, in fact, it was not retroactive. That the ability of utility to locate a track based upon roadway easement was not correct under the law. And then just recently, twenty twenty one West Law three nine one eight eight six I utility board, February first, twenty twenty one. The uh utility board went ahead and said, yes, you can use that roadway easement. It went against the recommendation and the ruling in a court case from Polk County that said you can't do that. And the rationale was that uh in light of the aforementioned, when they're discussing the case, they say the board's decision or the district court's decision is controlling legal authority. They say I rule the appellate procedure that provides that unpublished decisions of a court shall not constitute controlling legal authority. Problem with that is, and this is where I want to do some more uh legal research, is the I rule appellate procedure depends on the distinction of whether or not a seventeen A application for judicial review is something that was contemplated to be covered by the rules of the appellate procedure. Or whether it's actually just it's a district court action. District court opinions are barely ever published. And that's the um, that's the concern that Richard Volzier had, member of I utility board. And I read his position. That is that uh you know, the conclusion, he says, is in escape form. That the proper interpretation of three oh six forty six, that's to be applied prospectively. It does not change the terms of roadway easement created twenty five year years earlier. Easement is for roadway only and for nothing else. So these, this is in litigation term. Imagine N D A Farms and Dennis Alba will be challenging that. Seeking judicial review of this I utility board decision. So, yeah, it it's a true statement that this is, this is being discussed right now. So what is the correct legal answer? I believe in my recommendation to board supervisors would be you'd be a strong legal position arguing that the uh two thousand four statute three oh six forty six has prospective impact only. Because we have to consider Iowa Code four point five. I point four point five says that unless the legislation says it applies retroactively explicitly says it applies retroactively, it doesn't. And the I utility board member that dissent says, that's a big problem. We've not considered that at all in our opinion. So a court reviewing the posture is utilities board says, you can do this. District court says, no, you can't. Utilities board says, well, that opinion was never published, so we don't have to listen to it. And we're not going to consider any of the code sections that we consider in statutory interpretation analysis. Now, when that comes back to a district court, my opinion and my belief that a district court will be fairly um critical of the utility board's dismissive approach to a prior district court thing. That's why I can say for the board supervisors, my recommendation is that you'd be a safe ground to deny legally speaking, not getting, not getting anything else. Legally speaking, are you allowed to? I believe the answer is yes.
And the Iowa utility board is an administrative agency, not a part of the judicial branch.
That's correct. Under seventeen eight, that's correct.
So there, that's an administrative agency saying, we we just choose not to.
Follow the court.
Phone court.
And um.
That's that's a hard precedent for us to follow.
Right. And that's why this is, this is a unique exhibition. I'm familiar with the city of Nevada's legal counsel, Eric Clanton. We have a good working relationship. And I'm happy to discuss with her. And she has cases that point me in a different direction or she has insight. I'd be happy to consider her input.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So is this the entire length of S fourteen that we're talking about being in the right? That this work for this project, for this project?
Yes.
South of thirty, two two seventy, for three miles, correct. It would be in the right of way for S fourteen.
And none of the landowners want this, are willing to discuss having this on their land?
That is why we originally changed it, was because of that, that reason.
Not, not just the one, not just the one.
There was one specific with the original alignment being objected to the route where they north of two hundred and seventeen across to the east and then south. We haven't necessarily, there hasn't been uh objection in the public hearing from another landowner.
There, there hasn't?
There, there has not been any, any public comment made by a, a, a landowner in any of those public hearings that we're aware of. But we, we feel that there's likely others who are opposed.
But was the conversation ever, we would like to put it outside the right way. You have the, like, you, you, sorry, let me walk back. The plan has always been to be in the right way. So has the conversation ever happened with the landowners? Be outside the right way.
Outside the right of way, but basically right before the right of way, you're saying? Adjacent to.
There has been some conversation with a few more informal. There are certain areas, though, that it's not possible because there are structures adjacent to the right of way, which we would have to then, the city would have to purchase, you know, kind of jaw that easement around existing structures or purchase the property and demolish the structures to keep it adjacent to. So you know, it's, some of those property owners are, you know, I'm I'm sure that there would be an opposition for anybody to sell their home to allow for the construction of a sewer adjacent to the right of way where it could easily be accommodated inside of the right of way. But there, there hasn't been formal negotiations with permanent easement purchase because that's not the route that we were taking at this time.
Could I, could I take you back to the beginnings of your presentation? You said, uh, you saw and received D N R approval. Did you ever submit the idea of following Indian Creek, which is, what you said was the first thing you were looking at? Did you ever submit that to the D N R?
Yes, it was in the facility plan. Correct.
When you submitted to the D N R, you first asked them about the route following Indian Creek?
That was the, that was an alternative that was included in the facility plan. Yes. That route was.
Was that rejected?
It was not a recommendation. Our recommendation in the facility plan, which we're required to provide a recommendation, was to follow S fourteen. So based off of the information that was presented to the D N R, all the information with the alignment and the cost associated with following West Indian Creek was presented to the D N R. They did not have a comment that came back and said, we would like you to revise and look at this alternate alignment and go that way. They reviewed.
But they didn't reject it. They didn't reject that idea because you didn't present that as your recommendation. You presented your recommendation to follow S fourteen.
As required by the D N R's design standards, that's we follow those and providing the recommendation to the alternatives which were required to be presented for their consideration.
Okay. So you don't know that the D N R would not approve that?
No, I don't.
Or draft ground?
No, I can't speak on their behalf.
I wondered because you said one of the reasons not to follow Indian Creek is environmental. And I went, and that to me said that implied that D N R had said you couldn't do it, that that's not the case then. You know, I I think we all know the reasons for any wastewater treatment plant from Nevada, and that certainly makes sense. Uh, there are water quality concerns with the one that that exists now. I understand that with that. I think it's really necessary. My concern about this is it seems like with, there's a, S fourteen does not seem to be. I mean, that right of way has got so much going on with it anyway. There's, there's issues with construction because it's so narrow. It, I, I really take to heart the concerns about what cause this construction going to go with, it's going to be for the public, what could happen. We have to look at the primary reason that right of way is there is for the road and with development going on down there. I just can't believe that we're not going to be in a situation of at least widening those shoulders sometime. It just seems like there's too much going on in that area to be looking at a huge project such as this and all this load and and the potential costs to the taxpayers. In fact, county does have to come back and say, gee, you've got to move that because we are going to have to do something with that, though. It, it, it seems to me that the better course would be to try to find the easement that goes in a straighter route from your current facility to your new facility. And 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 I don't see that, I, I don't get the sense that that was fully explored. That's my concern about it. I don't feel like that was fully explored.
Are we incorrect in that assumption?
Uh, we looked at uh different alternatives um as required by the design standards. There are really only two feasible options here. I mean, you could talk variations of a hole, but in Ed, yet there's only two feasible solutions, following the West Indian Creek corridor or coming down S fourteen. Um, you could look at, you know, getting and putting it on private property and doing all this and that. Um, but in general, there's only two ways to get here that are feasible and logical. The reasons that the West Indian Creek corridor were not recommended were based off of economics, practicality, and feasibility, uh which are all crosscutters as was required uh for decision and recommendation as part of the D N R's uh design standard requirements as a facility plan submitted. So, you know, based off of those, uh looking at the numbers in terms of economic cost, long-term maintenance issues, and the overall concern with approval through the environmental review process, it was very evident that the West Indian Creek corridor is just really not a feasible solution. That's why it wasn't recommended. You know, in terms of what other variations along S fourteen are are available, you know, there are a multitude. I mean, we can look at going around various properties or infrastructure that would be, you know, potentially in the way or somebody would not be wanting to grant access. No, we're, we're always open to making an adjustment to, to the alignments to accommodate. Um, but there are certain constraints within the corridor, especially on S fourteen, that just because somebody doesn't want it there and they think it should go on the other side because the only reason is because I don't want it in my front yard is really not a justifiable reason that that we can provide to the city and say, well, yeah, move it over here because, one, from a practical standpoint, it doesn't work. I mean, there's, there's something else in the way or there's an issue with moving it and placing it here. And what what we presented and what we're, we're, we want to work towards here is to provide a solution that is to the mutual benefit of everybody, but there will never be a solution that will make everybody a hundred percent happy. And there will have to be some compromise provided on both parties and all parties in order to really make this work and is required on every project every year. So, you know, we want to address the major issues. We want to make sure that we're complying with any design standards that the county has with relation to the utility requirements. Any design standards from not only, you know, a safety and a traffic standpoint, but we're also required to comply with the design standards from the D N R for this infrastructure. It's the Iowa D N R that does have jurisdiction over granting a, a construction permit. And the physical design of this trunk sewer has to comply with what they require also. So well, there's, there's multiple things here that we're trying to balance and and make sure that we're complying. And our intent is to comply with everybody's requirements. But there are certain instances, for example, the concerns related to, well, what in terms of safety during construction and how do we address those? We feel we've given some pretty solid uh, you know, proposals on how we would address those concerns that quite frankly, we've used elsewhere and are accepted by other county engineers, but accepted by the D O T. Um, knowing that there are always inherent risks with any construction project, but there is also a requirement to feasibly and provide a standard of care to address those issues. Having to go above and beyond that is really not fair to the city of Nevada when others would not be required to be the same. So you know, again, we are more than happy to, to work towards a amenable solution. We feel that there are certain things that are still being discussed and brought up that are, are concerns that we just don't quite understand the rationale behind. And and I guess we'd like to figure out a way to, to work through that to, to come up with a, a project that benefits everybody.
Are questions or comments?
Board of Supervisors, this is Amelia Shoneman with Story County Planning and Development.
Amelia, I can barely hear you.
Oh, yeah, can you hear me okay now? I just wanted to clarify. The role of the Board of Adjustment in all this, I think Supervisor Merkin summed it up quite nicely. But I am available for questions if there are any further questions. You know, the, the role of the Board of Adjustment is certainly not to review. You know, the depth or size of, you know, an improvement in the right of way. And we did communicate that with them in the staff report that there's a separate. Right of way approval process with the county engineer and Iowa DOT that this still has to go through. And I think throughout. The review of the conditional use permit, we did communicate. With Darren, the proposed route. And, you know, his comments were pretty consistent that, you know, in conceptual review, he asked for what the size and the depth would be. I don't think that was provided with the submittal because they were still in the planning stages for that, but that, you know, they still would need to work through the details with him. When it came time to get the utility permit. And that there might be concerns about the depth, I think he expressed that in October, but that he had been talking with the applicant about it as well. But I just wanted to add to that. That certainly the board was aware that a utility permit was also required, so. Let me know if you have any other questions about the Board of Adjustment's action, please.
Thank you, Amelia. Go ahead. So one of the slides on your presentation that. There's something about 30%, 33%?
Thirty percent submitted.
That means, what is that?
Thirty percent of the design is done, so we still have 70% left to go.
Essentially, the, you know, the. The total effort, if we just kind of, we think about it in terms of milestones. We've completed 30% of the, of the effort to complete the whole final design, that's not to say only 30% of the actual. Alignments design, it's just that the total amount of effort completed to that point is actually 30% of the total.
Darren, are you making another PowerPoint?
I, I just wanted to, I don't know. In order to do an upgrade on S fourteen, a safety upgrade, with the lighting source, you guys now purchased more light right away. Maybe we need to work together, search for the right way, put our pipeline out there at the end of the right way. It's a fact. And, and I assume that's why there's not been an upgrade done on S fourteen south because of the. Brain damage to the building so much further, I can only assume. If we grow, we're going to need to upgrade. And we all want growth. I've seen the DOT do it for years, buy more right away, you know, move the power lines out. And, you know, knowing that the road's going to get light.
I mean, I think where we're, where we're at right now in the whole process is. You're talking to us about your plan, right? And the county engineer is saying that he has concerns about the plan. So. We can talk about the plan over and over and over again, and I'm glad that you addressed. The concerns, but the fact that he still has concerns means that we need to talk about. Changing the plan. And I think. We're all more than happy to talk about what that might look like. Working together to do something differently. Because we all want to see Nevada get its new. Water treatment plan. We all want to see that happen. But we have to address the concerns that our engineer has too.
Well. The clearing more right away would be setting up pipeline out farther than.
But you're talking about something that isn't even in our five year plan. Do you understand that, we're just.
I agree.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your guys' time and listening to us, and I guess moving forward, what we will do is we'll communicate more with Darren, we can come up with some more solutions for you guys. Thank you.
I really appreciate your time standing in today, going through, watching us through it. It gives us a lot more detail, and I would say further understanding from both sides of what's going on, so that is very much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for hearing us out.
A lot of good information in your PowerPoint, can you make that available to us?
This would be happy to provide.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
On a personal note, I would like to also support the Boys and Girls Club of America, I myself am a product of the Boys and Girls Club of America, it's a fantastic organization, it does very well for.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I answered a couple of questions yet, me and Jordan had the upgrade question, it's not really. Considered an upgrade, the term's not called upgrade, but. If we put. A three inch overlay on that or less, the DOT considers that maintenance. If we get over that three inch depth of asphalt, it's considered reconstruction or upgrade. Then you have to break the entire roadway up to current standard.
Okay, so if you go over the three inch overlay.
And we're doing that three inch overlay in the next couple of years, forget what year that's in. And every time we do that three inch overlay, we lose a little bit more shoulder width because you go higher. And then you're, we get to a point where you don't have enough shoulder left, and then you have to bring the whole thing up to current standard, so if that answers the upgrade question.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so I guess when I'm clear, it is three inches or less.
Yeah. Um. The one thing. The big sticker for me still is the bore pits, and. I'm gonna need specific details on how they're doing, I keep hearing we're meeting all requirements, but I'm not seeing what they're actually going to do. So until I see that, there's, I cannot recommend approval. And to say. All those bore pits and putting something that big into a road right of way like that is. Like. Standard, normal project is not, I've reached out to all 99 counties asking for anybody that has something comparable, I've gotten nothing back other than comments on how you can't let this happen. It is nowhere close to being something that's normally done. Rural 55 mile an hour highway in town, maybe. Control a little better. But the last comment was, there was talk about that four slope. Shall be located in an area beyond the clear zone for highway four slope. So he commented that he was outside of the four slope. Now, this is generally written around DOT requirements, which almost every four slope the DOT has out there is 401 or flatter because they have much wider right of ways and they build them to that standard to start with. So they're usually talking total four slope way out there. Ours is like 10 foot from the pavement because it's so steep. And this also says after that, whichever area locates the pit a greater distance, so it's not either or, it's whichever one is further out. So the clear zone or the four slope. The clear zone is much further out, so that's one we have to meet, not the total four slope. And this is the liability concern, somebody gets in an accident, this is where the attorney's at the point. You did not meet the clear zone requirement, sure, it's at the four slope, but you need to go at one greater distance out.
Gotcha.
And so. Until we, I see some specific. Specifics on how we're going to handle those bore pits. That is a highly unusual request in the county right of way, and our utility permit does not cover that. So, thank you, and we'll discuss this more, but I think you can see why now I wanted this to come to the board because. I kept getting that feeling, this thing's moving forward and they feel like they got bored. Board of Adjustment or whatever, it's approval, and this thing's going to move forward regardless and that, until. They meet my. Or answer my questions, and safety is the biggest thing for me out there. Fifty-five mile an hour rural highway is nothing like working in town. Keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. We need a five minute break. We okay?
Okay.
All right, then we'll go on to.
Oh, you do need a five minute break, okay, sorry, so I guess we'll take a five minute break. Thank you.
Are you ready?
It's recording.
Double check. It is recording. Okay, so next we'll go on to consideration amendments to the continuity of operations plan. Morning, Leanne. Good afternoon, Leanne, sorry.
So, the, what is before you are proposed revisions to the continuity of operations plan, continuity of government, that plan does provide. Instruction and guidance for Story County.
Do we have it?
They were shared at the CCMT.
Oh, gotcha, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I have a need for you. It's to enable essential county functions to continue. When facing a catastrophic emergency severely impacting a county's ability to operate as usual. This was originally adopted in September of 2016. Pursuant to Iowa Code Section 2020.7 subsection 50. Certain public records shall be kept confidential, including information concerning emergency preparedness. Develop the protection governmental employees. Visits to the governmental body or property under the jurisdiction of the government body. If disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize such employees, visitors, persons or properties. I state that code section. Because several of the code sections are, several of the sections of the COOCOG there before you today. Do contain information that are considered confidential under Iowa Code Section 22.7 subsection 50. The sections proposed to be revised include the obviously table contents, the promulgation statement. But then Sections eight. Twelve, fifteen, sixteen, twenty and twenty-three. Eight is the essential functions section. And that is confidential. Section 12 is resource management of activated plan. That is not confidential, section 15 is confidential, that is the alternate facilities. Sixteen is reconstitution, that is not deemed to be confidential. The last two are Section 20 vital records and in Section 23, the annexes are both confidential. So those specific sections, if the board did want to discuss any of those, would require closed session. And given the timing of today's agenda, I'd suggest that would be a future date too, because it's already pretty late. These were taken through the COOCOG management team, CCMT meeting. Well, three weeks ago, there have been no changes since we're originally presented to the CCMT, and the CCMT did recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors Wednesday. So I'll be glad to answer your questions.
The supervisor's question? Like you're needing a motion? Yep, is there a motion to approve? The. Go ahead.
I would move approval of amendments to the continuity of operations plan, as presented.
Then moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Seven is aye. Thank you, Leanne. Toby, looks like a definite consideration of authorizing a full-time custodian maintenance supervisor position.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is a position that we discussed. During budget work sessions, the budget forms this fiscal year '22. I'd like to get started on the recruitment process so that we have somebody ready to go shortly after we start the next fiscal year. Any specific questions?
I did look at the job. Description along with the Assistant Facilities Management Director. It seems like there's a little overlap, but I think that's because the assistant director is going to supervise first shift people. And the maintenance supervisor is going to do second shift.
Second shift, correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So overseeing supervising, overseeing supervision. Would be involved and troubleshooting would be involved, so I didn't, I just wanted to make sure that they were. distinctly different and, and that I understood why, so. I didn't have any signals.
I didn't have any questions right there. There are motions? I move approval of authorizing one full-time. Custodian maintenance supervisor position. To be built at 1.2. Second. Then moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin, Faisal? Merkin? Seven is aye.
Thank you.
Looks like you're up for the next one too.
Hopefully the last of the. Repairs needed after the. The thermal lines of the Justice Center were compromised. Back in January, this is referencing the two large pumps that circulate. Wellfield fluid from the wellfield outside and through the building. And there's a big. It's an air separator and a debris screen, is the first thing that. Once the fluid's brought into the outside, it goes to that first, well. That got hit with the big slug of. Rock and debris that initially got into the system when they hit the pipe. Collapsed the screen and broke all the wells on the inside to hold the screen in place, and there's no real way to repair it, so. That needs replaced, and then the pump impellers. I have pictures of them the last time I was up here, and then the inside of the pump housing. This big gouges, there's not much you can repair on those, so. Replacement was the most economical way. And then a lot of the components just, you know, by the time you. Pull apart, rebuild it, send it off, put it back, it's, you know, it's almost cheaper just by the. Not cheaper, but more economical because. The cost that you would save doesn't. Outweigh the fact that you can only repair it to a certain level. We were looking over three fourths of replacement cost just to repair what we have.
Needs kind of all the care thing rather than.
And then. Some electrical work associated with, that's disconnecting the motors and reconnecting the bolts there. The new pumps are installed and then section of asphalt parking lot that had to be removed so that they could. Access the damaged pipe that I gave you. Total of $28,180.
What is the sense so far for this?
So far without. Taking into account. County employee labor in, we're. About $90,000 in repairs.
Ninety?
Ninety, yes.
And are we expecting, hoping that their insurance will then cover?
Yes. It is in, it's in ICAP's hands to do the.
Gotcha.
When will we have a decision, do we have any idea?
Don't have any idea at this time.
I think it's your turn.
I just wondered if there were any other questions for a minute more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move approval of the wellfield circulating pump replacement asphalt repair approximately $28,185.
For me.
Unbudgeted insurance reserve. Yes.
Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Seven is aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This has been a long haul.
Been a long few months.
Yeah.
Right, next we have Alyssa, and I think Debbie Bean might still be on as well. Not sure for our insurance.
Not sure for our insurance renewal and increasing stock loss.
Good afternoon. I about said good morning too. All right, so we are not quite one full year into our self-funded model, but we are doing quite well this year. In that regards, we did, we did see, when we did the renewal, we did have an increase. Walmart typically increases your fixed costs, which are our fees, our stock loss, insurance fees, may admin fees for. That Walmart. Charges us to administer our plan. After looking at all of this, I am recommending to increase our stock loss. So that would be asking for you to approve a little bit more risk. It is a little bit more risk on the county's part, but I think in the long term, looking, you know, five to 10 years out, this is, this is where we need to go. In addition to that, I am asking to only offer the $1,000 deductibles unless required by a bargaining unit. That is also looking into the future and it does reduce a little bit of the administrative burden by our plans. And then finally, looking at the, what Walmart provides, they always provide suggested and maximum rates. Those are actuarial based rates that they provide for us. Based on that information, I am recommending a two and a half percent increase on our premiums. For next fiscal year. As a reminder, we had no increase last fiscal year. We moved, we just moved to the, the self-funded model. Our premiums were right in between those suggested and maximum rates on that Walmart suggested. And so we did not do an increase based on what we hit in our reserve. Debbie is on. Good afternoon, Debbie.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
She is the expert in this area, so I do lean on her for, for guidance. My recommendations to the board.
Questions? We have a lot of people that, that take the $500 deductible.
So I go back and look, we have 16 out of the 205 employees that take the $500 deductible. Very minimal. We do have our, the, the way we set up our, our contributions, we do kind of. Lean towards employees taking the, the $1,000 deductible, but. What I, what I'm trying to do is just, just transition us out of that, having four different, four different plans. In regards to the networks, I am not making any recommendation on that. I think having two different networks for employees to choose from is very beneficial. And I don't want to make, I don't want to change that at all, so. So 16 total. Out of, we have about 205 employees, we have 213 contracts on our Walmart plans, but that includes retirees. So I have about 205 employees that take the insurance through the county. Out of our 275, 280 eligible.
It looks like to me the premiums are so much less on the 1,000 that it should really. Making up in the premium what you're losing in the deductible.
That, that, that's true. We do have some employees that, that don't, they just, they don't want that $1,000 deductible, so they want to pay more premiums. But if you actually, if you break it down, you do pay more premiums to have the lower deductible than, than your benefit on most of the plans, so.
Alyssa, I think you've done a really good job managing. This, this way of us providing our insurance and I, I do understand there's a little bit more of a risk of $75,000 on that. Stock loss, but given the numbers you've been looking at and given, given our history, I think, I think that that's a good move.
Yeah, I concur. I think that we're able to move this way already within our second year. Shows some dominance that we have. I know you'd like to, I know you're looking at further into the future where you'd like to, like to be the certain reason why, make sure we're not rushing.
No, and Debbie can, it's, I don't know if you have anything to add on this, to this.
No, I, I concur exactly what you're saying. It's very, it's a prudent step. It's a reasoned step, given the account balance. And it positions you well for next year. We don't know what we'll be looking at, but. As we live and breathe, it's generally some type of increase. So if we can take a little more risk now, that positions us well for next year.
Any further questions? Or either Debbie or Alyssa? Okay, so the plans themselves are not changed?
No, the design is not. They, they will be the exact same plan, same co-page. Drawn plans all the same. No, no plan design changes.
Great. Is there a motion?
Yes. I would move that we. To increase our individual stock loss insurance to $75,000. Eliminate the $500 deductible option on both the line select and blue choice plans unless required by collective bargaining agreement. Continue current employee and employer contribution rates and increase health insurance premiums by 2.5%.
Then moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seven's aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Next we have on our agenda is, under other reports, we do have an engineer's report. To read through, I don't know if Darren's on the line, if he wanted to make any further comments on this. Tyler's on the phone. I think we've unmuted you, Tyler. Tyler, are you on the line? That he is. Well, we do have the report here. We could certainly contact Darren or Tyler if we have any additional questions in relation to the report. The quarterly, moving on to 15, under other reports, that is the move to next week, the fiscal year 21 quarterly financial report will be moved to next week. So move on to any upcoming agenda items? Oh, Darren, now on? Oh, okay, well, let's take a step back to Darren. Hi, Darren.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I just had a couple of things on my report I just highlight real quick. First, I, we've been doing a lot of covert inspections. That's our smaller coverts. We have thousands of those out there. We've been inspecting those and unfortunately we found some pretty deteriorated coverts. They're gonna need some attention soon. And of course, they're the deepest ones and longest ones out there in the county. They're really hard to work on. So we're trying to find some solutions to those and I'll keep you updated on how those are going. The other issue is with the paint shortage. It's something never really considered before, but. There is currently a paint shortage for painting highways. It's, sounds like. The major issue was the Texas freeze and then there's the shipping container issue and it was, I think, three issues that affected this. We're still a little unclear on when we might be getting more paint. Some are saying maybe six months. But we usually have three bidders on our paint and we got one. And then when we reached out to them about the details of it, they're like, oh, well, we can't really actually get the paint yet, so. We usually paint this time of year, so we're gonna have to hold off on that, but we're trying to work with the, the one bidder that. Submitted a quote and we're gonna have them try to get as much paint as they can. We'll prioritize our roads and paint the highest priority first. And hopefully we'll be back to normal next year. The 13th Street Rise Project, just quick update on that. The DOT Commission met yesterday and they're presented with our application. From the way that went, it sounds like it's going to get approved, but that happens today. It actually might have happened already. They have a second day of commission meeting and I will find out today if they approve that or not. The DOT recommended we switch that over to a different type of rise grant where we're actually gonna get more money out of that, a 50%. So that should be a good deal. And at this point, the way the DOT is viewing it, since we're not sure who's gonna annex it and when. They just view it as a county application. And once it gets approved, then we can work out the details with kind of side agreements on who's paying for what. Yep. Do you have a question?
It's that good news.
Oh, okay, yes. Lastly, I just wanted a quick comment. I need to make some calls today. Again, the Roland Bridge project on E18. They've got it E18 closed through town, which is causing a lot of additional traffic on our gravel roads on the west side of Roland. I told the city upfront that they'd have to pay for the dust control for that since they made the decision to completely close the road. We're getting complaints last week and this week and I've reached out to the city and they say they're working on getting that arranged and I think they're kind of dragging their feet. So I'm gonna have to tell them I'm gonna put it down myself if they don't and bill them for it. But we're working on that. We had some more complaints today, I understand. They said it would be down early this week and I haven't heard anything about it, so. Hopefully we'll get that resolved soon, just in case you get any calls on that. We're working on getting the dust control down. That is all I wanted to comment at this point. Any questions?
It sounds like you're making some progress with that Canamaro Road Bridge.
Yes, the DOT is trying to look into some of our options with the state and working with ISU for some other options. But we did, we did dig out that abutment a little bit more to keep. I went out there a week ago and there was kids out there on the sandbar, but they weren't on the bridge, so that's good news.
That is good news. Thanks for keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have any additional questions. Anyone else have any additional? Okay, thank you, Darren, for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to public forum number two. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of the meeting law, but may do so in the future. Open public comment. Does anyone who'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or six, six star nine. Press star nine to unmute yourself. I am not seeing anyone, so we will close public forum number two. Rapid liaison assignments, committee meetings, and announcements. Do you want to go through that now or? Just move on from there? So just move on. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Seven's aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.